If I can get everybody to take their seats, please. We're ready to get started.
Oh, yeah, she did. She asked last week.
Right.
My brain has stopped, Ms...
Being at 6:30, I'll call the meeting to order for November 28th, 2011. Will the clerk, please, call the roll?
Thank you. Mayor Ford?
Present.
Mayor Protam Moreno?
Here.
Councilman Benson?
Here.
Councilwoman Carson? Councilman Teeter?
Here.
And sir, if you could press your flashing red button, please?
I'm the little white up in the front, Rick. The way it says "Present."
Thank you. Councilman Bullock?
Here.
Councilman McIlhany?
Here.
Councilwoman Elliott?
Present.
Councilman Douglas?
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. And let the record reflect that Councilwoman Carson is not with us this evening. She was excused at last week's meeting. I'd like to remind the audience to please turn off all cell phones and pagers for the duration of the meeting. But I'd like to ask you to stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance.) To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I would like to ask the audience to introduce themselves. The staff will pass around the microphone.
Pam Sfratler.
Eddie Thomas.
Danny Thomas.
Stacy Malakovic.
Carl Emrick.
Kathy McIntyre.
Tracy Snyder.
Kristy Douglas.
Darren Strop.
Ryan Yon.
Kim Calamino.
Eli Moreno.
Domingo Moreno.
Guillermo Serna.
Leanne Noawal, Grand Administrator.
Carolyn Keith, Parkson Recreation.
Michelle Gonzalez.
Michael Kim, FOP Lodge 19.
Sean Howard, Information Technology.
Hannah Mullin, Congressman, Perlmaner's Office.
Ms. Ryan Cordero, Government Relations.
Ronald Lepina, South Adams County Fire District.
Michelle Rogers, City Manager's Office.
Ray Benson.
Greg Clemens, Public Works Director.
Sam Hoover, Public Works.
Julian Amco, Communications.
Jody Bacon.
Bill Baca, Chief of Police.
Saunders, Director of...
Community Development.
Patrick Buckley, Community Development.
Welcome, and thank you all for being here. First item on the agenda is to take care of the citizen communication. I want to remind you that you have three minutes to come up. Please state your name and address for the record. When I call you, come forward. I will start with Mr. Benson, Ray Benson.
Not this one.
Good evening.
Good evening. How you doing?
Good. State your name and address for the record, please, Ray.
My name is Ray Benson. I'm the owner of Benson's Breakfast and Barbecue off 6960 Highway 2 down the street.
Great. Well, now's your chance. You've got three minutes to let us know what's happening.
All right. Well, I'm here for a couple of reasons, actually. First, I want to come here to, um, I don't know if you guys all know who I am, an overdose into Jim, but I want to say that I'm a little barbecue restaurant, family restaurant. I opened up down the street April 1st, 2010. We've been business over a year and a half now. And during this time, business has been great, but we've had a few problems and a few miscommunications between community services. My main issues right now that I'm bringing up to the table are four violations that I received concerning signage that needs to be taken care of by December 6th of this year. One is concerning a sign that I had out front for my Black Friday specials. Two, the signage that I've had on a part of a private pole that I've had a light installed in the parking lot prior to when I owned it stating that it was a barbecue restaurant, and a sign that's been out front placed in the median area. That's all off the standard and specs. In the past, I've also been, I've actually been to court over a few violations according to the city with, when I started out with my new business, I put LED lights around the business stating that, you know, just showing people I was there, it was open because the business had been vacant quite often for quite a few many years, and I just wanted to show my presence in the neighborhood. I got a violation on that, and then I, I was told to take them down, and I complied to that. Then I put red pennants around, hoping that would help draw more business, and I took them down to comply with that. And I'm just, another one I went to court on with a banner which is considered a shark fin that was on a pole attached to the building, and I didn't take it down, so I had to go to court for it. I paid the fine, spoke to the judge, and it didn't seem to get anything out of it. Well, this time, I'm coming before you guys to make sure that, well, I'm just trying to ask if we can get some type of leniency for small business starting up in the city. I know there's laws in place right now, but when you start a small business, it's costly. And I'm just trying to figure out, I know that it's easy to start a business if you have the capital, and I had quite a bit of capital when I started, and I had a business plan to do everything else, but with all the other, you don't expect all the things to happen when you start a business. Things go wrong, things don't happen your way, and there's a lot of different aspects in the business that you don't plan on. And that seems to generate revenue that you don't have for. So I want to come before the council and see if we can create some type of leniency or new laws to be put in place, changing the old laws, and I need to change them on a yearly basis, but work with the small business because it seems like the laws that we have in place now in the city seem to hinder us and not work with us. And I just, I really think that we need to give small business such myself, I'm coming upon my two years, so it's really not going to affect me much, but if we can allow new business that comes into the city some type of leniency, is that my time?
Yeah, your honor.
Some type of leniency to work with us to where you want to promote us instead of demote us, because this is a rough economy. And I've done all this stuff not to make the neighborhood ugly, not to offend other people, but to promote the business, to let people know that we're in the community and we're here to serve them.
Great. Thanks, Ray. Stay there for a second. Councilman Benson?
Yes, thank you. You know, we've had, over the last couple of years, I've heard complaints about our sign code. One from builders up in the north area where they couldn't put signs out on the street, and, you know, I'm just thinking, as he says, we need to be helping businesses, maybe especially small businesses, and especially when they're just starting up. And it sounds like a lot of these rules are not exactly doing that. So I don't know, what, should we, I guess, look at our sign ordinances again and see if we can come up with something that might be a little more palatable to some of the businesses in this community? Because I want to be business friendly. I think everybody in this council wants to be business friendly, but I hear things like this, and I'm thinking, why, why do we require this? Because it hurts business. I know that we have to have some, some rules and regs that have to be followed with regard to signs, but not, not so much that they might hurt somebody's new startup business.
Okay. Mr. Douglas?
Thank you, Mr. Benson, for coming forward with this. You know, I traveled down Highway 2 several times through the week for different things as well, and I've seen different signages on, on restaurants on Highway 2. So could we direct this to staff as far as, I mean, I would, just for all council to know, what's the signage as far as size, how long it can be up there? I know if you have a new business, you can have it be up there for a certain length of time, but I know, I can't think of the new restaurant just north of El Hardin's, but El Hardin has signs for burritos out there. By looking at his signage right here for all you can eat on Saturday, so, just so we're up to speed on what can and cannot be posted, because I see this all the time, and, and I see a little pig out there, people holding the sign and everything. I think that's pretty cool, but just to know where, where he stands, because, like I said, I do other see, I do see other buildings that have signs on them as well, similar to what he has. So if we can clarify that, so we're all up to speed, that would be great. Thanks.
Okay. Mr. McIlhany?
Hi. Thank you for coming forward, Mr. Benson. To Mr. Councilman Benson's point, I know we did revise the sign code to some degree within the last couple of years, perhaps a refresher of what that might be, but I think what I hear is a need for discussion potentially between a small number of business owners and our community services department to potentially brainstorm what those considerations might be, to put some, put some concrete ideas on paper. You've obviously had a number of things that you've tried to do to promote your business. Those have been met with resistance by community services. There's some conflict in the sign code that we have at present that's in place now that's limiting you or preventing you from promoting your businesses you feel you should be able to. So if council be supportive of it, I'd suggest we get a small discussion together and have staff and a designate from that discussion come back and give us some ideas about what concrete changes or exemptions might be merited for the small business community so that we can consider those as modifications to the sign code.
Okay. Mr. Benson?
Yes?
Nope. Other one.
Oh, you're all right.
The other one.
Brother.
You know, I just have one last comment. I know we've heard about signs along Highway 2. You know, we've got a lot of things along Highway 2 that need to be fixed before we start hassling somebody on account of the signs that they're putting up to try to promote their business. We've got a ton of things on Highway 2 that need to be fixed other than signs. Thank you.
Mr. Moreno?
Mr. Benson, thanks for coming and sharing your concerns. I think you bring up some great points about maybe some leniency for small businesses just starting out. Obviously, visibility is an issue there for new businesses, and we want to make sure that you're able to attract the customers that you need to make your business successful. You know, I think another, and I support Councilman McIlhany's request that neighborhood services sit down with some businesses and try to work on some solutions. The other issue is, you know, I think that there is maybe an amendment that the city council can make to the sign code that also exempts, you know, maybe some special holidays, like you mentioned, Black Friday. We know that's a big shopping day for people that they're out and looking for businesses to, to spend their, their money. I was just, Councilwoman Elliott brought up just before when we were discussing Small Business Saturday, and the city should be supportive of our small businesses and, and make sure that you have the tools you need to succeed on a day like that, and make sure our residents know what local options there are for their consumerism. So I think it'd be a great idea to look at our sign code and to make some of those necessary adjustments.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Moreno. You know, Mr. Benson, thanks for coming in. I would also agree that we need to look at our sign code. I know that, you know, we have businesses out there. We don't have that many restaurants, family restaurants, and we, you fixed your place up, just like Ben and El Hardin's, La Casa, I mean, you fixed your place up nice, and you could have elected to paint it neon green, or blue, or, or pink to try to help attract more business. And I personally would rather see, be, have the opportunity to hang a sign up for a couple of days that would allow you to, to do a special like you did for Black Friday, and make it, make that opportunity there for all small businesses, as long as it's done tastefully. However, I wanted to talk about the citations that you did receive, and I know you said you were going to take the one off the pole.
Yes.
So that's a non-issue.
Correct.
You were going to take the Black Friday one down because it's over.
Correct.
That's a non-issue. And then, of course, having more than one banner will be a non-issue because the Black Friday one will be down. But the other one is the, is the permanent sign that you put out front. I had an opportunity to visit with the city manager a little bit today, and we're both in agreement that you need to come in and pull a permit, and I want to make sure that you're treated fairly on that permit fee, and it's based on what the cost of your materials are. And I know our planning department will work, will work with you on that. And I also want to apologize, I, I did read in there that, you know, you were hit with this at the busiest time of day, and I want to make sure that when our code, code people come out and have to cite you for something, that they do it when, when it's not so busy and convenient for you as well. So I think that we have a little bit to work on. But I would like to have our, our planning department and maybe even economic development work with some of the small businesses. And from this aspect, it looks like you and Mr. Martinez at El Hardin's are the ones being hit with banner violations right now. Maybe we can get you two and maybe someone from La Casa del Rey or Jay's or something together. But we'll have staff put something together to where you guys could sit down and work something out that, that is tasteful, to be able to advertise in our city without having to paint your building an extreme color or something, because we want you here. We want you to, to provide that service to our residents. And frankly, right now in this economy, we need every business we can, and we need to help them survive. So I appreciate you coming in today. Do you have one more? Jill?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, anything that our staff does in issuing these citations, they're doing because the ordinance is written the way that we passed it. So it's not their fault. They're just enforcing the ordinances, and we need to take a look at it.
I agree.
To make it a little easier on our businesses. So, thank you. Thank you for coming in.
Well, I think staff has direction to move forward to get some, some input on signage. And I'd like to, if you need any help with that permit, these guys can help you. Just come in here at your convenience here in the next few days, pull that permit, and I'm sure they'll be fair to you and work with you to get that signed permit out front.
Super.
Thanks for coming in, Ray.
You bet. Thank you, guys.
Next, we have Tracy Snyder, our former mayor protam. State your name and address for the record.
Absolutely. Honorable Mayor and members of council, good evening. My name is Tracy Snyder. I reside at 5991 Newport Street, Commerce City, Colorado, of course, 80022. And I'm able to speak about fracking right now, Mayor Ford? Okay, great. Well, I come before you tonight to speak about fracking. This weekend, I met with several citizens and spent a lot of time with several citizens from the South Lawn reunion area. As you may know, there is much concern over the many issues that surround fracking, and I know that you heard extensive comments and testimony from citizens on November 21st. After looking at the map, I now know that there are many wells in Commerce City. I know that the communication to the people by the county is not what it should be. I would ask that you ask the staff to get in touch with the county and ask to be told about anything going on in the growth boundary, which I see by your resolution, you're going in that direction. I also have major concerns about fracking around the wildlife refuge. The potential danger is a great concern, especially if there was anything to occur anywhere near Basin F. More legislation needs to be put in place to control this. I wish I was able to do this myself, but I will be asking our state legislators to bring a bill forward to address this issue. I will attempt to speak with Representative Casso, and I will speak with Mary Hodge. I am also already working on speaking to Department of Interior Kinselzar, who will understand the unique situation we have at the refuge. I have made a commitment to this group, and I will continue to work on this issue. Therefore, I encourage you to pass Resolution 2011-77 and to support the efforts of the people who are working on this. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the council for Mrs. Snyder? Mr. Bullock?
I want to thank you so much for coming in. We had a lot of concerned citizens last week dealing with this issue, and if you sit, stay around long enough, you're going to hear some amazing things that we are trying to propose to deal with it within the upcoming future. So we...
That sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, Tracy, I want to thank you for coming in this evening. And a few of the things we did do last week was we directed our staff to get together a plan, an action plan, that anytime this is taking place in or near our city, that we have a plan that will take into account the residents within a certain area, notify them, even, even whether the state or the county does or, or not. We'll make sure that we're out in front of it, and that we can hold a neighborhood meetings and make sure that they have the information they need, and that we have somebody on board that can make sure that they're following the regulations that the state puts forth. So I think we've, we've tapped into that, and we do have the, the resolution on this evening's agenda. So I appreciate you coming in. We all have those concerns. And when it comes to the Arsenal Wildlife Refuge, I have asked to make sure that staff find out who owns the mineral rights underneath of the refuge, to get with the refuge management, and make sure that they know that, that this is happening in the area more prevalent now with this new sands that they found. Also to make sure that there can be no horizontal fracking or exposure to, to the refuge. And we may have to work with Charlie Sharman and some of those folks from the Army side to make sure that, that stays untouched for those minerals. But I do appreciate you coming in, and I think we're, we're on top of it, on top of it as best we can.
Great. I appreciate that, and I'm looking forward to hearing some of your solutions that you've come up with. And I do want to reiterate again that I do think a bill needs to be introduced to have more control over this at the House, you know, just at the Capitol in general, because right now, as you know, oil and gas is not regulated in that way. So I think that we certainly need to take a look at that, as well as whatever you come forward with. So looking forward to hearing that. Thank you very much.
Okay. Next, I'll call Kristy Douglas.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Kristy Douglas. I reside at 10970 Unity Parkway, Commerce City, Colorado, 80022. And I'm actually on the roster twice tonight. The first thing that I would like to talk about, so I hope I actually hit my minutes to start over, is that okay? The first thing that I would like to do is thank all of the council members who made it to the outreach on the Thanksgiving Eve at Kearney Middle School. We were so pleased to have you there. We served over 1,000 people, and there were 300 volunteers. And to have the council people come out and help with that was just incredible. And so we wanted to, to express a special thanks to those of you who were able to make it. And Sean, I know you were invited, but you were sick. So thank you for accepting the invitation, and I hope you can come next year. And it should be even bigger and better next year. And then the next thing is to invite all of you to the CCBPA Annual Holiday Gala that is happening this coming Friday. That is December 2nd. If you could make it out also for the bag stuffing, that is the morning before, at Our Lady of the Mother Church. Starts at 7:30 in the morning. We'd love to have you join us. It's always a lot of fun. And then, of course, we have our Santa event, which is also at Our Lady of the Mother Church. And I believe that starts at 9:00 a.m. the following day. We have Mrs. Claus here actually tonight. Kathy McIntyre is going to be Mrs. Santa Claus this year. Really excited about that. The gala starts at 6 o'clock, and that will be at the Worth Manor. So, made it through that one.
Perfect.
You know, I, I do not like to come and speak publicly because that's not my thing, but I do it when I think there's something that's really, really important. And I just wanted you to know that I have spent much of my time since a week ago, last Thursday, doing research on fracking. And I can tell you that there is so much information regarding both sides of the controversy that it is much like, as someone else has described, drinking from a fire hose. There have also been people who are affiliated with the oil and gas industry who have approached me personally insisting that fracking is completely safe. And I've asked them to come to you directly, actually, and speak before council, and I'm hoping that some of those people are in fact here tonight. But I guess I'm the last one on the roster, so maybe not.
No, there's one more.
One more? Okay. So hopefully, someone like that will, will come forward. But in my research, I've found that the sites that promote this technique for extracting natural gas are very technical in explaining the process. However, when it comes to the environmental effect aspect, I can assure you that the information becomes quite simplistic and generalized. I personally just can't see how injecting a chemical cocktail into the earth, followed by explosives that cause the rocks beneath us to fracture and crack, could actually be good, especially for us, since we are so close to the contamination cleanup project for the Rocky Mountain Arsenal, which is now proudly, very proudly, the Rocky Mountain Arsenal Wildlife, National Wildlife Refuge. I would hope that the powers that be would take this into consideration before moving forward with whatever plans they have slated for our community. Knowing the history of the arsenal should tell us that only hindsight is truly 2020. Perhaps this time, it'd be best that we all took a real good look before we leave this time. Thank you.
One second. There may be someone that wants to talk to you. Any of the council members have any comments for Ms. Douglas? No? I want to thank you for coming in. You know, I think that the goods and bads of what happened with the fracking... You know, I think that the goods and bads of what happened with the fracking incident are that we now know what to expect, and we can be prepared so that we can give out positive information. It's not something that we regulate, but as long as our residents know
Right.
that the rules are being followed and that it's being done properly, I think is the most important. And with this resolution, that'll help.
That will definitely help. I think what needs to happen at this point is that the community really needs to band together, and we need to make our voices heard. And so I really appreciate the support and the acknowledgement that the council has given us and has taken in, you know, taking safer precautions and knowing that the public needs to be informed before something like this happens. So I do appreciate the steps that you have taken.
Okay, thank you for coming in this evening.
So thank you.
Okay, next, we have Mr. Larry Quintana. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Ford, members of the council, members of the audience. As always, it's always a pleasure to come up here and address the council. I'm here tonight to introduce to you someone who you probably are very well familiar with and who is now the new liaison between Adams 14 and the city council. And that is the person of David Rolla. Now, I'm going to ask Mr. Rolla if he will come up forward. I kind of put him on the spot, because he didn't expect this, I don't think. I have been serving as the liaison between Adams 14 and the city council for the last four years. And I have chosen to try to move one step higher in that I'm trying to get a state position where I could not only be a liaison to... Don't word it. Be a liaison not only to Adams 14, but to the city, and that's with the state CASI Board of Directors. Again, once again, I'm campaigning for that position. But in the interim, I don't have to introduce Dave. You all know him. He's been a longstanding member of our community, one of our teachers in the district for many, many years. In fact, he graduated with my, one of my younger brothers, Gilbert, class of 66. And Mr. Rolla and his family are well-known here in Adams 14. And I take, it's a great honor to be able to, be able to kind of pass the gauntlet over to Dave, you know, because he's more than capable of doing what little I did in the last four years. And I'm glad to be just part of this team that will make Adams 14 and Commerce City, City Council, a great team to work towards the future of Commerce City and Adams 14. At this time, if I like to relinquish the remaining seconds I have or minutes to Dave, so he can say a few words if he desires.
Thank you, Larry. Yeah, I think it's going to be a great pleasure working with some of you. I know one of you is one of my classmates. Three of you are some of my students, and now you get to tell me what to do and what I can't do. So, but I think it will be a great pleasure, and it's going to be interesting. Now, last week, when they put me to talk, I told them I was going back in time. You know, they always say you can't go back in time. But I feel like I'm going back to time in first grade, learning all these new politics that are going on, instead of just listening to the TV and reading the paper. So I look forward to being here. Thank you.
Mr. Quintana? I don't think you stated your address. Could you do that for the record, please?
Yes, forgive me. Larry Quintana, 7780 Magnolia Street, Commerce City, Colorado, unincorporated Commerce City.
Great. Now, hang out for a minute, because there's a few people that would like to address you. Mr. Moreno?
Mr. Quintana, thanks for your partnership over, you know, since I was elected. You've always been here at the council meetings, and we really appreciate that, to continue that relationship between Adams 14 School District and the City of Commerce City. So just want to thank you. And Mr. Rolla, it doesn't seem like that long ago that I was sitting in your classroom, student council. And it's great to see you in that position. You've always had a heart for the students, and I think that's the greatest thing that we can have on the school board. So look forward to working with you as well.
Okay, Mr. Benson?
Yes, Mr. Quintana, thanks for your service in being the liaison for Adams 14 to us, and welcome, Mr. Rolla. I look forward to working with you. And Mr. Quintana, did you say that you were passing a gauntlet?
I don't know if that's the right term. Maybe I should have used something else.
Torch.
What?
Torch.
Torch, okay.
Gauntlet's pretty hard.
I just wondered about that phrase. Thank you.
And I wanted to say that the backup will be Adrian Schimpf, who is also on the board. That doesn't mean I won't be showing up from time to time. I still enjoy coming here and listening to and hearing what's going on in our city.
Great. Next, Mr. Teeter?
I'd also like to thank you, Larry, for your time here with the city council and all the work you've done with us. And congratulations, Dave. I know you'll do a fine job.
Councilwoman Elliott?
Good evening. Thank you for being here, Mr. Quintana. I look forward to building a strong relationship with the district, with your leadership. And, Mr. Rolla, yes, it's been many years since I sat in your classroom. I won't say how many. But I'm thrilled to see you on the board, and I look forward to working with you as well.
Mr. Douglas?
Thank you, Mr. Rolla and Larry, for coming forward and making that exchange. I'm looking forward to working with you, Dave. I came there last week to see you being sworn in, and you as well, Mr. Quintana. So looking forward to our relationship. Thanks.
Mr. Bullock?
Mr. Quintana, Mr. Rolla, I just want to echo the sentiments of all the council members up here, and thank you so much for your service, and we'll look forward to working with you, Mr. Rolla. Thank you.
You know, I appreciate you coming in this evening. It's great that we have a representative from the school district here on a weekly basis to keep up to speed on what's happening with the city. I have already asked our acting city manager to put together a meeting date that you guys will be seeing very soon. It will be like a mini summit between this city council and both of the school district boards within our community, so we can sit down and talk about relationships and how better we can help you guys to move the school districts forward, and how you can help us to continue to help build a great community. So watch for that to be coming. It's great that Dave will be here on Monday night, so that if we have any issues about school district stuff, that we have someone in the audience that we can reference.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for coming in. That is all I have on the list. Is there anyone else in the audience who had an item that they wanted to address the council with before I move forward? Seeing done, we'll move forward in the agenda to... The first item is resolution to support disclosure of chemicals contained in fracking fluids. I will need a motion and a second to move that resolution forward. Councilman Moreno?
Move approval of Resolution 2011-77.
Okay. Councilwoman, Mr. Macledonny?
Second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Will the city attorney please read that resolution?
Yes. Title of the resolution reads, "Resolution Supporting Disclosure of Chemicals Contained in Fracking Fluids."
Okay. Is there any discussion? Mr. Moreno?
Just a quick item for those residents that were not with us last week. We requested this resolution in advance of the December 5th Oil and Gas Commission hearing, where they will be discussing about closing a loophole within the law that states oil and gas companies do not have to disclose fracking fluids if they are deemed a trade secret. And this council took the proactive position that our residents have a right to know in every circumstance what chemicals are being used so close to their homes. And so we will also have a, we will also have council representation at that December 5th Oil and Gas Commission meeting to formally present the resolution to the commission and testify at that time. So, thank you.
Yeah, I have a motion and a second. I'll now ask for a roll call vote.
Roll call or a voice vote, sir?
Can be voiced. Then we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. We do have to take consideration of a letter to be accompanied by this resolution, and that letter is something that the attorney... You want to read what that letter has to say?
Yeah. I'll summarize what that letter has to say, and then with the council's permission, I'd like to further report on this entire issue. I think this is an appropriate time to do that. The letter basically adds weight to what the resolution says, and that is, is it's an effort to encourage the Oil and Gas Commission to recognize that there's a need for public disclosure of this fracking operation and the chemicals that are involved with part of the fracking operation. So the letter simply says, "This resolution is intended by this city council to strongly express our, the city's wishes with regard to the Oil and Gas Commission taking action regarding its rules and regulations concerning this fracking operation and the public disclosure." And the letter will be presented, if you pass approval, will be presented along with the resolution.
Okay.
And after this vote is taken, I would like to advise the council for the benefit of the council and the citizens, based upon directions from the council, the efforts that staff and myself have made in this regard, and how we're moving forward, and perhaps the city, interim city manager will have something to add, but I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me? No, we took the vote and approved
No, it's on the motion.
Approval of the resolution. Now I'm asking for a new motion and second to move forward the accompanied letter that is a little more specific and a little more pressure applied with that resolution. Councilman Macledonny?
Move to approve the letter as outlined by the city attorney in support of Resolution 2011-77.
Okay. Councilman Bullock?
Second that motion.
I have a motion and a second on the letter that will accompany the resolution. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Now, I want to defer to the city attorney to talk about a couple items. One of those, Bob, would you please mention the sunshine laws as well?
Okay, the, if I could, first discuss the issues that are facing the city regarding the fracking issue, because that's in the forefront of the citizens' minds out in that area, as well as the city council and staff. One of the issues that is raised, has been indicated for this hearing before the Oil and Gas Commission, is whether or not the oil and gas companies are required under the regulations of the Oil and Gas Company, Commission, to disclose what chemicals they're using as part of their fracking operation. The oil and gas companies position that disclosure of those chemicals is part of their trade secrets, is part of their business operation, and if they have to disclose that to the public, then their competitors will know how a business is being conducted by an oil and gas company that's doing the fracking operation. And they consider that a trade secret and should not, they should not have to disclose that information to the public. On the other side of the coin, nondisclosure means that the public, including the cities and including the governmental entities involved, do not have full knowledge of what's going on with the fracking operation. So there's a crying need to have those points of operation disclosed to the public. And that's where the issue comes into play for the Oil and Gas Commission. Do they require disclosure or do not require disclosure? And our resolution that you just passed, and this letter, states basically that, and I'm going to read a summary of what I've prepared with regard to that letter and what we're trying to accomplish. "The trade secret provisions of the proposed rule should be revised to assure that information can only be held based upon legitimate claims of entitlement to trade secret protection. And the operator has the burden to demonstrate the need for trade secret protection." As it's written right now, all they have to do, they, the gas, oil and gas companies, have to say, "This is a trade secret," and that's the end of it. They don't have to do anything more, and they don't have to disclose anything more. That's the way the present rule is proposed. So there needs to be a mechanism existing for affected citizens and governmental entities such as the City of Commerce City to challenge the trade secret protection. And the commission, not the operator, needs to make the trade secret determination. What that means is that the information needs to be given to the commission, and then the commission will determine, just like a court of law, when you have an issue of a, of a, something that isn't to be disclosed in the public, the court makes a determination whether or not that should be withheld. What we're doing is we're asking the Oil and Gas Commission to make that determination. We're further asking the commission's determination to be a reviewable action. What that means is that if the commission makes a decision, and we're not in favor of it, we as a governmental entity or a citizen is not in favor of that, and we think there's been a prejudicial decision made here that is not fair and non-discriminatory, then we have a right to have that action reviewed in court. As it is now, it's not a reviewable action, and this would require a review be impossible if we choose to pursue that line. Oil and gas operators must be responsible for the information they provide to the, to the public and to the Oil and Gas Commission. That means that if the information later turns out to be inaccurate or false, the oil and gas company making that irresponsible disclosure is then liable for that disclosure. There has to be accuracy and complete disclosure. Now, here's a good one from the city's point of view, because of the proximity to the Rocky Mountain Arsenal contamination pools. "Samples of fracking fluids must be collected and preserved by the operator. Samples will be subject to testing by Oil and Gas Commission or local government randomly and upon demand." In other words, we have a right to ask then, what is going down there for that, as part of that fracking operation? And if it turns out that what is going down is different than what's coming out, because it's interfered with that plume from the arsenal, as an example, then there's a sound basis then for attacking what is taking place with that operation. "Bans should be imposed to eliminate the use of chemicals or concentration of chemicals that exceed drinking water standards." These are all part of the rules that are being considered and that what we're standing for at this hearing. "A requirement should be imposed that all hydraulic fracturing fluids contain an inert marker that can be traced back to a specific operator, so that if there are numerous wells in the area, there's a method of identifying which well the issue is being caused by." And then, "Health care-related inquiries for trade secret information must be given immediate response." They can't sit on it and say, "It's under review. We're doing our paperwork on it." It's required to have an immediate response. Now, all these things considered, I'm not an oil and gas expert, as has been indicated previously, but there are attorneys out there that do this very sort of thing. So today, as well as just prior to the holidays, I've been in touch with an oil and gas attorney that has agreed to undertake representation of the City of Commerce City with regard to not only what we have before us with this operation that's just outside the city limits, but also with any operation that acc... just outside the city limits, but also with any operation that occurs within the limits of the City of Commerce City. Frankly, our efforts for an operation outside the City of Commerce City are much more restricted, because obviously, we don't have legal control over what is in unincorporated area of Adams County. We do have legal control, to the extent that we have authority on operations within the City of Commerce City. And that brings me to my next point. Presently, when this city council adopted the land development code, we've included oil and gas regulations. And I've asked this oil and gas attorney to review our regulations, to give us an opinion as to whether or not they're legal. If we've overstepped our bounds, because the Oil and Gas Commission has ultimate authority on operations, but there are certain things over which we have control. And that legal opinion will be forthcoming in the near future. And he's willing to address the city council at the appropriate time, if you desire that he come out and address you personally. But in the meantime, he's operating through my office and taking his directions for me, and I'm taking my directions from you. One obvious point on the oil and gas regulations that we've adopted, they apply to new applications for drilling an oil and gas well, to new ones. They do not cover ones that are already in existence that are being reopened for new operations. So, to that extent, I've asked him to look at our regulations, to expand them, to cover if there's an increase in operation under an application that's already been approved, say, years ago for digging that, or drilling that oil and gas. If there's an increase in operation, a reopening of that well, then they have to again come before this city council through our planning commission process for a conditional use permit. So, that's in place, subject to your stating tonight whether or not you wish me to proceed, because he's on standby now, at my direction, asking him to look at that. So, those are the steps that, that have been taken through my office, and I know that the city manager's office has also proceeded with certain things. Do you want to add to what I said, Brian?
With consul's permission, city manager will address the council.
Good evening, Mayor Ford, members of city council. We indicated in the staff report for this item that we're pursuing the fracking issue on a number of fronts, as directed by city council at last Monday's council meeting. Mr. Gaylor has talked about one of the key ones, and that is a review of the city's current processes, and whether they are appropriate, and also whether or not we have opportunities to, to have additional regulatory oversight over new operations. And as Mr. Gaylor indicates, what authority do we have over existing, already permitted wells? And in addition to that, we are talking with Adams County to make sure that we are provided notification of new permit applications within the county that are in an area that could affect Commerce City residents or Commerce City property owners. We are working on expanding the information available on the city's website to provide accurate information about fracking and about drilling in Commerce City and in the areas around Commerce City. We're also going to begin a process to examine emergency operation plans for well-drilling operations in and around Commerce City. And we're also doing extensive research on the arsenal and how that may be impacted by drilling operations in and around Commerce City. So, we are pursuing the issue on all of those fronts, and we expect to be back periodically with updates to council.
Okay. I would like to ask the city attorney to please touch on, you know, the, this has driven some neighborhood meetings. And, and let me bring it up, Bob. We have the sunshine law, doesn't allow more than two council representatives to be at a meeting of that significance. If there's more, then we violate the sunshine law. So, what I would like to do is ask the council, if they're amenable to placing Mr. Macaldonie and Mr. Douglas as the representatives up in that area, to work on the fracking issue, to bring back information to this council. And with that, I would, they all, they already know that they can't promise anything that this council doesn't act upon as a unit. So, they would have to bring back any information that they wanted to have acted on by the council. But is the council amenable to allowing those two to represent us in their neighborhood from the fracking venue?
Let's have a motion to that effect, so it's in the minutes, Mr. Mayor.
I would take a motion, if anybody has one ready. Mr. Macaldonie?
Move to ask council to designate Mr. Douglas and myself as the council liaisons to the community fracking discussions.
Okay. Mr. Douglas?
I second that.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You have a motion, Mr. Attorney, and now we have two representatives that can be liaisons to the residents on the fracking issue up in our northern range. Is there any other discussion?
I would add to that, Mr. Mayor. I think that's a very wise decision on behalf of the council, because as part of my orientation presentation scheduled for later this evening, I'm going to discuss the consequences of violating the open meetings law, and there are some serious consequences that the city could incur if there is a violation of the open meetings law, because it then could affect any later action that you take, and I'll be discussing that in the orientation.
Okay. One of the things I would ask of the two representatives, I know some of the council has been informed and updated on what's going on up in our northern range. Some haven't. When you guys do have one of these neighborhood meetings, and you do get information, please make sure you carbon copy all of, all of the council, as well as the city manager, so that all of us can be up to speed on what's happening. I know this is an industry that we have to have, we need to take advantage of our natural resources, and I don't want anybody to feel that this council's coming down on the industry. We just have an obligation to make sure that our residents feel safe in the process of this ongoing industry. Is there any other discussion concerning oil and gas? Mr. Douglas?
Yes, I have something here, just a sec. Yeah, I just want to make it clear and make it fair for everyone, as far as, for those who oppose it and those who are for it, I mean, opposing against it. I did reach out to Shay Holmes. I asked Metro District Boards, the folks that sit on Metro District Boards, if they were aware of this fracking issue, and I got some, some back from already to indicate that it's not a part of Metro District, but Shay Holmes is aware of potential oil well drilling. And they also have negotiated with a surface use agreement. So, I'd like the staff to look into that and find out exactly how that's going to look in the near future and all, and get back with us on that, or maybe even post something on the web. And the other thing too, since this, since these are in these enclave areas, is there any way that we could annex those into the city? Were those well wells still, so we could have a better control of what goes on?
It is my belief, Mr. Douglas, that whether that well was within Commerce City or outside of Commerce City, based on the fact that it's an existing well, prior to any regulations that the city may have in effect, that we would be able, we would be restricted at, at the level that we are now, with it being in unincorporated Adams County, non-jurisdictionally, even if, we would be under the same circumstances if it was with, was within the city proper. Am I correct, Mr. Attorney?
I agree.
So, I think once, once the staff, and I want to ask for, to give some direction to staff here, on bringing forward this attorney to look into how we're regulating oil and gas within the city for new permits, and find out what we can and can't do, and let's do what we need to do to make sure that our, our residents are safe, or at least feel safe with this, with this going on. So, now I would ask the council if they would like to make a motion to direct the staff to, to get legal counsel, to look over our requirements for oil and gas. Mr. Macaldonie?
I would so move, and I would also just ask that we add to that research, an analysis of the, the existing plats, the approved plats in the community. It's my understanding that different developers, different builders have approached the problem slightly differently. So, I know you've referenced the, the desire for a plan, essentially how we're going to approach new oil and gas activity in the, in the city. I think it would be helpful to know, for existing platted and planned communities, wherein those communities could oil and gas development take shape. My understanding is that based on lot size, it couldn't happen in someone's yard, per se, but it could potentially happen in a park or otherwise. So, as part of that legal review of the LDC, would just ask that we also, if council agrees that we look at the existing properties in the, in the community.
Mr. Attorney? In regard to that issue, what is presently under review, any application for an oil and gas operation, and if extended, as I have indicated, I would hope we can, and that's being researched, for any additional operation of an existing well, that's going to require a conditional use permit.
Right.
So, any new operation, regardless of where it's located,
Okay.
would require a conditional use permit, which means that goes through the planning commission, then comes to before the city council for authorization. Bearing in mind that there are certain limitations on your authority here, because of the Oil and Gas Commission also having jurisdiction, but we have authority, we as a city have some authority that we can exercise. And that's what we're looking at with the new oil and gas regulations, as, as we're reviewing the existing ones, to see what authority and to what extent we can go with this. And especially, in light of the fact that we are in proximity to the Rocky Mountain Arsenal Wildlife Refuge, and that places, in my opinion, the City of Commerce City in a unique position, because what may be true for oil and gas regulations in general, may not be true when you've got a contaminated plume that could be impacted by an oil and gas operation. So, we're looking at that, and regardless of where it's located, a conditional use permit is going to be required.
And that's only on new.
Right.
But I do believe, Mr. Macaldonie, your comments about the plating process, I would ask that our, our Department of Planning would, would look at that, and what the process is when you do do a plat for new development, if, if those sites are set on that plat to where they have the opportunity to extract their oil and gas from, instead of anywhere else within that development, and what we need in place from a plating procedure going forward, to at least direct those to an area that will be less harmful to the development. Is that what you're looking for?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think that's, that's a key piece of it. I think the other piece though is, for existing neighborhoods, let's say, I'll use Frontera as an example. Frontera may have approached oil and gas in a different way than Shay. And based on the way that they've platted and been approved for that development, where in the neighborhood, for example, if a well becomes a desirable effort by the oil and gas community, where could that essentially take place? So, I guess in my mind, I'm envisioning staff taking the, the data from the Cotton Oil and Gas Association website that shows us where the wells are, relating that to communities, so we know what wells are known in those areas, and what considerations might be in place, given the approved plat and plan for that PUD, so that we have a sense of what we're facing. So that as these things come forward, I guess to me, this is sort of, let's build a list of what we know, and then as these things emerge, we have some amount of data in hand, so that we're not reacting cold when somebody comes in with an approval. So, in this example, the county makes friends, and we agree to get in, they agree to give us information, and the next time a permit comes through, we find out it's in Frontera. We can quickly go to our list and know exactly the details about that from our perspective, so that we're able to pull the trigger very quickly from a communications perspective. We have sort of available information in hand. So, that's, I guess, the other part of what I was envisioning, if that makes sense.
Okay, let me go through the list here. Mr. Bullock?
I was just prepared to make a second to the motion.
Let me see here. Mr. Moreno?
Before we entertain a, a second on the motion, can we just clarify what the original motion actually entails?
Yes, I think the, the original motion had the following pieces to it. One was the original request to have council authorize Mr. Gaylor's engagement of the external council for review of the LDC, and our existing well and gas provisions for whether or not they're legally supportable. Second was to define, as the mayor recapped, the process for new development activity. And the third was cataloging of existing wells, and any unique provisions based on the PUD or the plat that they exist in. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can, with consul's permission, can we add a fourth item to that motion? And that is to authorize special counsel to file on behalf of the City of Commerce City in the oil and gas hearing, a consent to the, or an agreement to the position taken by Gunnison County, which is requiring those items that I read to you earlier, that we've covered in a, in the, in the letter and the resolution, but this would put us in a legal position to file a legal document that joins with Gunnison County stating those very same things. I think it puts us in an even stronger position to be heard.
Okay, is that acceptable to the motion maker?
Yes, sir. Yes, it is.
Now, Mr. Bullock, would you like to second that motion?
I'll second that motion.
You have a motion and a second. I would like to ask for more discussion. I have Mr. Douglas here.
Yeah, you know, I forgot to include, did you guys get an update with Gordon Stevens, the designate for South Adams County? Have heard back from him, because I know last week he tries, tried to contact him, and there was no answer from him.
I don't know the answer to that question. We've reached out Adams County, but I don't know if we've heard back yet.
Okay, and one more thing is, South Adams Water, have you talked to them or anything about where they sit on this?
Mayor and council member Douglas, we have reached out to the Water District, but only to this point on, did they provide the water and provide permission, which they had. In my discussions with Jim Jones, he did say that they did not have any real concerns about aquifer contamination, just because of the separation, and if the rules and regs are followed, but we're going to do additional follow-up as well.
Okay. And could you follow up with them and ask them, is there a limit that construction waters, far as per sale, there's a limit?
We'll ask, we'll ask them as well, and folks have brought up what's happening in other communities as well, as far as people not agreeing about the selling as well. So, we'll follow up with that and have a report for next week.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Benson?
Yes, I got several questions for Mr. Gaylor. What part of this might be subject to a future quasi-judicial proceeding by this council?
On this particular case that has raised these issues, there's not a risk, because it's not in the City of Commerce City and won't be eligible for annexation for a period of time. And that period of time is such that the fracking operation will have commenced and probably been completed before it's even eligible. will have commenced and probably been completed before it's even eligible for annexation. Now, as far as any future applications are concerned, that we have to be cognizant of a probability of a conditional use hearing. And that implicates then the need for concern with quasi-judicial proceedings. And I'll talk about that in the orientation.
Then I'll rely on you to give us sufficient warning because we're all getting a lot of information about these issues. And we're only supposed to consider those things that we hear at the hearing. But I think you'll be capable of...
Yeah, and bear in mind, just to give council some comfort level, until we receive an application for a specific site, it doesn't generate the quasi-judicial concerns. Once we get an application for a site in the City of Commerce City, then that triggers a need for you to be aware that you have to consider evidence only that you receive at the hearing. And you can't consider evidence outside the hearing and shouldn't even participate in discussions outside the hearing.
Okay, with regard to the, are you through, Mr. Gaylor? Okay, with regard to the sunshine law issues, we're not going to be violating the sunshine law. We have more than two people at any of these meetings as long as the three council members or four council members don't discuss city business at that meeting. Is that correct? Anybody can be at a meeting.
May I answer that, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, you may.
Here's the problem, is that city council members who are part of the community that are impacted or conceivably are impacted by a well site, you have a building interest in that discussion. So it's not like going to some meeting that somebody else calls and you just go and sit and listen. This is a little bit different. So I am concerned that if city council, more than two, attend a meeting where these issues are discussed, even though you may, you as the third member may sit quietly by and just observe and listen, you're still at the meeting as a city council member. And I think you're running the risk of violating the open records meeting. And that has significant consequences because if later a conditional use application comes in, then any action you take could be subject to an allegation that you violated the open meetings law. And any action you take in regard to that conditional use could be invalid. So it's better to abide by what the council has indicated for attendance if there's a possibility of a conditional use application. Now, on the one that you have in unincorporated Adams County, as I indicated earlier, I'm not so concerned about that because the consequences of violating the open meetings law are not as great because you're not taking any action. It's when you attend and then take action after your attendance that you run a severe risk. So if you attend as a third person, by all means, don't say anything. Just let the two that have been designated say something. But frankly, if somebody asks you a question, puts you in awkward position to say, "No comment," or "I can't answer that question." Because there you sit as a member of the city council. So my advice is you send two and limit it to that.
Okay. I know we would like to get a list of the chemicals that are going down in the hole. And only under special circumstances are we going to be able to get that. Would it be possible to list certain chemicals that cannot be used? To exclude certain chemicals that we know are harmful? Just say, "We don't care what you put down there, but as long as you don't put these down there."
Well, that's all going to be part of this rulemaking hearing before the oil and gas commission. And that's what will come out of that. We'll see how that turns out. Now, if it doesn't...
I was just suggesting that that might be something that we want.
If it doesn't turn out to our liking, then there's the fallback position, may not be valid, but certainly has a good chance of being valid, that we put it in our conditional use criteria. But that's for down the road.
Correct. All right, you said that there was going to be a provision for court review. What would be, I guess, are you talking about an injunction?
Yeah, if there, first of all, these are proposals to the rules that the oil and gas commission are being considered. And this is one of the things we're asking for, along with Gunnison County and others that may be appearing. So it would be a court review. And it could be a Rule 106, which means a quasi-judicial hearing, just like the city council is familiar with. And if those of you who are not, I'll talk about that during the orientation. Or it could be an injunction. But chances are you'd be reviewing what the oil and gas commission did. The court would be reviewing what the oil and gas commission did. And it'd be more in the nature of a review of the record called a 106 proceeding rather than an injunction proceeding.
Okay. What will be the timing on us getting, hearing back from our, I guess, Mr. Barber? What's the timing on us getting his legal opinion?
After tonight's meeting, I am to call him and tell him he's got a green light. And I would say within a week to 10 days. And he needs to get something filed with oil and gas commission like tomorrow. So I would expect that. And if you, council, in the future, ask him to come out and speak to you, he'll be available to do that. City manager and I haven't really discussed that approach because I think city manager is going to be inviting others from the oil and gas commission to come also. But I would say he's going to be giving this priority and working on it within the next week to 10 days.
It would just be nice because I know a lot of people have been going out and doing their own research. But there's only, nobody's, that we've talked to so far is an oil and gas expert except for people like Phil Barber. And I'm thinking that our people need to hear what their legal rights are from somebody that's qualified to give that kind of an opinion. Because anything that we talk about prior to that time is just, it may be just a waste of time until we know what our rights are. I'm just wondering when we're going to be able to hear that.
If the council authorizes him to come out.
Okay, good.
Seeing no further discussion, I have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. We'll move forward to the next agenda item. We have three ordinances that are up for first reading. Start with 1874, an ordinance amending the 2011 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant Funds in the amount of $5,519.21 for the Bulletproof Vest program. What are the desires of the council? Mr. Moreno?
Move approval of ordinance 1874 on first reading.
Mr. Macaldoney?
Second the motion.
Motion and a second to approve the introduction of the ordinance. Will the city attorney please proceed?
Title reads, ordinance 1874, an ordinance amending the 2011 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant Funds in the amount of $5,519.21 for the Bulletproof Vest program. In the police department and the authorization of the expenditure thereof.
Perfect. Any discussion? Mr. Bullock?
Oh, sorry.
No? Okay, seeing no discussion, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to or for information only on this ordinance? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Okay, let the record show that the motion's been approved. Next item is an ordinance 1875, amending the 2011 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Adams County Open Space Grant in the amount of $13,000 to be used for a new concrete border and shaded bench and tabletop at the Gifford Park and at the authorization of the expenditure thereof. What are the desires of council? Mr. Bullock?
Move approval of ordinance 1875 on first reading.
Okay. Mr. Moreno?
Second the motion.
A motion and a second. Mr. Attorney, will you please read the title?
Title reads, ordinance 1875, an ordinance amending the 2011 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Adams County Open Space Grant in the amount of $13,000 to be used for a new concrete border and shaded bench and tabletop at Gifford Park and the authorization of the expenditure thereof.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of, in opposition to, or for information only concerning this ordinance? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote. The record showed that the ordinance is approved on first reading. Next item on the agenda is ordinance 1876, amending the 2011 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Adams County Open Space Grant in the amount of $325,579 to be used for youth teen enhancements to the senior lobby enhancements and infrastructure enhancements and the authorization of expenditure thereof. What are the desires of council? Mr. Bullock?
Move approval of ordinance 1876. Council is seated on first reading.
Okay, Mr. Douglas? Is there discussion on this? I'll call for discussion after we have a second.
Okay, a second?
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by the council on this item? Mr. Douglas?
Yes, as far as the enhancement of the senior lobby and the infrastructure, is there any layout as far as blueprints or anything, as far as what they're going to be doing?
I'll refer to city manager.
We did not prepare a specific presentation this evening. I don't know if Carolyn Keith. Carolyn is here and can give you a brief overview. We can also come back to you at a later date with more detailed information about the renovations.
Yes, that would be nice.
Could I ask Carolyn to come up?
Yep, please.
Honorable mayor, members of city council, Carolyn Keith, Director of Parks and Recreation. The staff has been working on this particular project that involves what we have referred to as the senior lobby enhancements, the youth and teen enhancements and our general infrastructure enhancements. At this point, we do not have any final construction drawings. We've been in the process of securing our funding sources. We have been working with Barker Rinker Sea Cat, who is the original architect for the Recreation Center, in putting together some of our estimates that we had for the total cost of the project and seeking our grant funds as well as our capital improvement project funding that was requested through the 2012 budget process. And in regards to the senior lobby enhancements, we've been working with a group of our seniors that have been involved in a special projects committee in making some improvements that the seniors, as part of a senior focus group that was put together last summer, or excuse me, last spring, identifying some of the things they'd like to see, making it more friendly, more open and welcoming. We've addressed some of those issues and we'll be coming back with our committee and with the architect to put together those final construction drawings. There's also an area that we're looking at to enhance some of the teen and youth components within the teen, what is called the teen annex. And then it involves the replacement of some infrastructure needs throughout the facility that deal with carpet, just general wear and tear items. So that kind of, just as a general overview, we'll certainly be able to, as Brian McBroom indicated, come back to you at a later date and give you more information. But it wouldn't be until sometime after the first of the year.
Okay, the reason why I asked you to come forward, because inside the area where the kitchen, you have a stove there that the gas is always on. Is this part of, as far as infrastructure or anything, as far as equipment, kind of changing that out so we don't have that type of old gas stove going on with that pile of light lit all the time?
There are no, there's nothing within this project that addresses items within the existing kitchen. And our current stove meets current regulations. And so I'm happy to visit with you in a separate...
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Carolyn. Mr. Moreno?
Ms. Keith, just quickly, sorry. By understanding and I, from previous discussions, is because of some of the lack of use of the billiards room, that some of that space will be transformed, right, into additional programming space for the teen and youth center?
Yes, there will be some modifications in what is currently called the annex, the teen annex and the billiards area. There is a wall that separates that. And there will be some improvements in that general area that will remove that wall, extend and open. There will still be billiards or pool tables. There just will not be as many. They aren't currently used. So we're looking at and have worked with some of our youth and teens in regards to some of the activities that are more current today, like WEE and some of the technology that is not only applicable to our teens but also to our older adults and adults and families. We currently have some of our seniors that have participated in some of our WEE programs.
Great, thank you.
Seeing no more discussion, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to or for information only concerning ordinance 1876? Seeing none, Mr. Attorney, please read the title.
Title of ordinance 1876 reads, "An Ordinance Amending the 2011 Budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Adams County Open Space Grant in the amount of $325,579 to be used for youth teen enhancements and senior lobby enhancements and infrastructure enhancements and the authorization of the expenditure thereof."
Thank you. If there be no further discussion, I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, the motion has passed and we've introduced all three of those ordinances. Now we'll move on to our study session portion of the meeting. And we'll get started with the adoption of the 2009 additions of the international codes. And I would ask the acting city manager to have staff present.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city staff has been researching for quite some time the relative benefits and disadvantages of updating the city's building codes. It's a difficult issue. It's a, it's a difficult time in the local economy to discuss more restrictive requirements for building construction. But we think it's appropriate to have the discussion with that community development director, Jim Hayes, and building official Patrick Buckley are here to walk through a presentation that will cover some of the key issues that we'll be facing and looking at updating the city's building codes. We've also asked Fire Marshal Ron Lapenna to be here as well to provide his perspective on the recommendations to update the building code. And I believe we also have a representative from the Home Builders Association here also. So with that, I'd like to invite Mr. Hayes to come forward.
Thank you, honorable mayor, city council members. Jim Hayes, Director of Community Development. I know we're running a little behind, so I'm going to run through the present... I know we're running a little behind, so I'm going to run through the presentation relatively quickly. There's a lot of written material in your packet, and then we'll go ahead and get to the questions. Again, Patrick Buckley, our chief building official, is here tonight to follow up and answer any technical questions you have. One of the things I wanted to do is just run through the presentation, and then at the very end, we'll have an opportunity for Ron Lapenna from South Adams Fire to come up and speak, offer his perspective, and then Kim Calamino from the Home Builders Association will also probably provide some comments. We invited South Adams Water and Sanitation District to attend as well. They did submit a letter, but they're not here tonight to offer any testimony. Again, the Building Safety Division is responsible for enforcing the city's adopted building codes, issuing permits, conducting plan reviews and inspections. This is one of the divisions within the Community Development Department, which includes planning as well as neighborhood services and housing. Again, this is really the technical reason up on the screen why we enforce building codes, largely public health, safety and welfare, but the thing I want to point out is that we really view our role as a facilitator to really assist citizens and contractors in navigating through that process, and we do pride ourselves in being very responsive and consistent with our approach, and we recognize that it's a balance between regulation and economic development. Why are we coming in front of you tonight? We're currently enforcing the 2003 versions of the codes. The code cycles are reviewed and released every three years, so the '06 as well as the '09 cycles have been released at this point. So we're skipping over the '06 cycle, we'll be looking at the '09 cycle for adoption. A majority of the communities in the metro area have already adopted the 2009 International Building Codes, and architects and other professionals are actually required to use the latest code cycle, and so therefore, they're already designing buildings that are meeting this current code cycle. When we first brought this up, it was in the fall of 2009. Again, that predates my time here with the city, but at that time, there were four issues that were brought up, and I'll explain those in just a minute here, but we were directed at that point to conduct some additional research before proceeding with the adoption. So after the initial discussion, there were a variety of reasons why this was put on hold. Number one, I think we all realize that there were rapidly changing economic conditions. The time was not right to adopt any new codes at that point. Many other communities in 2009 had not yet adopted the code cycle, it had just been released. There were also a lot of issues regarding residential fire sprinkler systems, which were put into the code for the first time in 2009. So two years after the additional discussion, we believe that the time is right now to revisit this. A majority of the metro area jurisdictions have adopted the 2009, as I mentioned. Eighteen out of the 27 jurisdictions that we surveyed have adopted the 2009 codes. Three more are currently planning adoption very soon, and we believe that consistency among all the communities is important. It really does help our builders and the contractors that are doing business in a variety of areas to make sure we're consistent with the other cities. So let me dive into the four issues real briefly. The first one was residential fire sprinkler systems in one and two-family dwellings and townhomes, and this would be part of the international residential code. The, out of the 18 jurisdictions that have adopted the 2009 codes, there are actually 10 that have included this, and eight jurisdictions have actually amended this out of the requirement. Of those 10 jurisdictions that adopted it, eight of them have decided to wait until the implementation until January 1st of 2013. So you can see, a lot of communities are really taking a wait-and-see approach before they're making this a mandatory requirement. Again, that's because it was the first time it appeared in the code in the 2009 cycle. The Fire District would prefer to keep this language in the codes, and the Home Builders Association has submitted their letter supporting staff recommendation to exclude these provisions from the 2009 code adoption. The second issue was cost of compliance with the 2009 energy conservation provisions. We believe that there are actually a lot of market forces out there right now that home builders are actually complying with a lot of these. People are wanting more energy-efficient homes, they're demanding these types of features in new homes right now, and we believe the market is already responding to this. But in order to ease the transition to the new code cycle, we're recommending a soft compliance date which would allow builders to meet the new requirements. Specifically, if we assume a new effective date of April 1st of next year, then we would extend this provision to October 1st of 2012, or whenever the codes go into effect, six months from that date. And again, the HBA is supportive of this recommendation from the staff. The third issue was the cost to home builders to update their existing master home models. Staff is proposing a soft compliance date for this issue as well. Effectively, builders would be able to use their previously approved model home plans until April 1st, at which times they would have to submit new model home plans, and then we would offer a six-month window. The typical permit fee for a model home plan revision is between $800 and $1,000, and we'd be proposing that we keep this at $150 for six months to allow them to phase the model home plan improvements that they want to make. They could also phase out some home models that they're not selling quite as well and wouldn't have to even go through the expense of updating those. And again, the HBA is supportive of staff recommendation in this regard, too. The last issue really affects non-residential property, and there's a longstanding amendment to the building and fire codes which actually require fire sprinklers in non-residential buildings, 5,000 square feet and greater, as well as additions to those types of buildings. This has been a special amendment in our code for at least 20 years. South Adams Fire would prefer to keep this requirement in the codes, but based on our research, this is inconsistent with all the other communities in the metro area. It's the only community that has this requirement. In fact, we surveyed Adams County as well, the unincorporated portion, which is also partially served by South Adams, and they do not have this requirement. So we really believe that this is an issue of regulation versus economic development, and our recommendation is that we repeal this or not include this amendment in the non-residential portion of the code. Again, Fire District would prefer to keep this in the code adoption. So to summarize, we're seeking some direction tonight, able to answer some questions about these four items, and then permission to proceed with adoption. And what that would mean is, we would, we've had some communications with Home Builders Association, contractors. We had a comment period which we opened up. We did not receive any comments during the cycle, other than from the agencies we mentioned. And so the next steps, if it's acceptable to you tonight, we would proceed with preparation of formal ordinances with the city attorney, open a new comment period with various stakeholders. We'd also do an email blast to offer to meet with any of the home builders that are doing business in the area or any of the contractors. And so our tentative schedule for returning to you would be in the first quarter with first and second readings with a potential effective date of April 1st. And then lastly, before I conclude, I'll go ahead and allow Kim Calamino and Ron Lapenna to come up. I guess we can hear from Kim first, and then I'll turn over to Ron for his comments, and then Patrick and I are available for some questions when they're done.
Good evening, Mayor Ford, council members. Thank you for the opportunity. Kim Calamino, Vice President of Government Affairs for the Home Builders Association of Metro Denver, 9033 East, Easter Place, Sentinel, 80112. I know that you've received via Mr. Buckley a great deal of information from me about the issues that we have. Our primary issue, of course, being with the fire sprinklers as mandated in the IRC. And I, again, want to state our strong support for staff's recommendation for removal of that requirement, as well as support for the processes and procedures that they recommended to you for implementation of the remainder of the IRC and the IECC. And given your support of those recommendations, we offer our support of both IRC and IECC. Without belaboring, given the great deal of statistical information that I've provided you in the past, and I hope you've had the opportunity to absorb at least some of that, I do want to highlight some of the key areas that I think deserve your consideration regarding the fire sprinkler issue. Why do we recommend that you remove it entirely? We believe this is a mandate purporting to solve a problem whose existence is not supported by data. Colorado is, has among the lowest residential fire death rates in the nation. Nationally, the number of fires in one- and two-family homes continues to decline even as the number of homes increase, and this without mandated fire sprinklers. The vast majority of states have legislatively preempted this requirement, and I've provided you a map showing that is the vast majority. There are only two states that have mandated it, and six, including Colorado, who have not yet taken such action, primarily because we are home rule states. Between 1980 and 2007, there was a 49% decline in the number of one- and two-family home fires, even as there was a 50% increase in housing stock nationally. Similarly, between 1980 and 2007, there was a 43% decline in one- and two-family fire deaths, even as we experienced a 32% growth in national population. Resources would be more productively used to ensure that all homes, not just new homes, had smoke detectors. This is what has resulted in the decline in fire deaths. Local statistics have not been presented to validate the need, and without such validating data, such a sweeping mandate should not be enacted. We are concerned about the lack of statistical, historical performance data on residential fire sprinklers. Data collected in 1998 by the National Fire Incident Reporting System reports that sprinklers failed to operate in 68% of the incidents because the fires were too small to activate the system. NFPA data from 2003 to 2007 similarly found that in 57% of the reported fires, the fire was too small to activate the system. In fact, because there are so few homes with sprinkler systems installed, we cannot find their presence even routinely reported in the data used by any of the national databases. Smoke alarms work. There is no statistical evidence that sprinklers are needed. As reported in the study, US experience with smoke alarms, over 90% of occupants survived fires in homes equipped with hardwired interconnected smoke alarms from 2000 to 2004. These are the very kinds of smoke alarm systems that are required now in all new homes and townhomes built today. The purpose of the code is life safety, not property protection. Yet the two studies most commonly referenced by sprinkler proponents, the Scottsdale Study and the Prince George's County Study, rely very heavily on reduced property loss to make their case. Working smoke alarms in every home would alert occupants to exit safely, call the fire department, and this would reduce the loss of life if that is the true concern. This should be the focus of our efforts. New homes are safer than ever before due to, as you're experiencing tonight, the constant churn and the upgrade of building codes. The kinds of things that cause fires in homes are typically due to conditions that exist in older homes. If you had data that demonstrated where the fires were occurring, you would find that it's not in new homes, it's in homes that don't have updated wiring, don't have smoke blocking, don't have improved products that reduce fire hazards, and don't have hardwired interconnected smoke alarms. And certainly, we are all aware of the continuing economic crisis and the struggling housing industry, which is typically an economic driver, not just locally but nationally. Adding unnecessary costs to housing at any time, let alone in the greatest housing crisis we've ever experienced, is simply irresponsible. It will, such a mandate would only increase the cost of housing. The costs that have been reported to you and reported routinely throughout the metro area are vastly understated. Builders are getting quotes of $3.50 to $6.00 per square foot, not anywhere near the hovering around a dollar a square foot that is routinely reported based on the Scottsdale Studies. And that cost ignores the replicating effect. If you increase the cost of house, you increase what is called the valuation on which a building permit is assessed. The building permit cost determines the plan review cost, so both those costs go up. Use taxes go up. You've heard from your water and sanitation department that likely tap fees and service line costs will go up. So a pure square foot cost on an installation of a system is only a fraction of the likely cost that you will be imposing on the builder who has no choice but to try to pass it on to the buyer, who is right now hard to find and not likely to be able to afford any additional costs at this time in any case. So, again, we strongly support staff's recommendation to remove that requirement entirely, and we support their recommendations on how they plan to implement the code going forward, working with our builders, and we congratulate you on your professional staff, who does a great job of outreach, discussion with the HBA and their builders, and works very hard to make sure that you have quality home building, great communications in the community. I'd be glad to entertain any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the council for the representative from the Home Builders Association? Mr. McLeod?
Thank you so much for appearing tonight. Your last points related to cost and referring to the per-square-foot estimates that have been thrown around. I seem to recall when we last talked about this, estimates as high as $4,000 a house for an average installation. Is that still a fair ballpark?
That's probably, that's probably an underestimate. You know, if you look simply at the contractor's cost for the system, you're probably looking at least at $6,000. But if you have all of those other sort of snowballing costs, it's going to go up dramatically from there.
I think it was helpful to hear your other, the other elements to those costs. I think it's easy to think about the mechanics involved of more pipe, more water, more time to include that in the construction, but I was just trying to get my head around a total cost that we can consider per house, because I know, as you point out, the home building business is not in great shape right now, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for coming forward with your presentation. I had a question for you. You know, being the homeowners association, what's the code or distance homes can be as far as being so close together? Because I've seen homes, you know, in an area where the, you don't have that much room as far as landscaping, far as being land size, property size, so these homes are pretty close together, so when one house gets caught, when one house starts, as far as a fire, reaching upon the next home, what's the zoning for that?
Mr. Douglas? That would be handled in our side setbacks that we have in our development standards for residential development, and I'm sure the staff can get you that information. Let me ask, Mr. McBroom, do you know what the side setback requirements are without a variance in our development standards for single-family detached residential?
Mr. Mayor, you are correct. Side setbacks are regulated through zoning, but there are also requirements in the building code that indicate how close-together structures can be. I think Mr. Buckley can probably give you an overview.
Okay, Mr. Buckley, if you could for a moment, please?
Yes, sir. To answer your question, when structures, residential structures are less than three feet from a property line, the construction has to be fire-resistant rated, and there are opening limitations such as windows and vents and things like that. So the building code doesn't prescriptively say you need to be X number of feet from a property line, but it says if you fall within a certain range, and it's generally less than five feet and right about three feet where fire-resistant construction kicks in, and you have to protect the structure, excuse me, on either side of the property line. And the zoning, the city zoning setbacks are generally excess, in excess of that, but vary from subdivision to subdivision, but generally are about five feet to property lines. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. No other questions for Kim? Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Mr. Lapenna, you want to come? Mr. LaPena, you want to come forward and give us the fire department's take on it?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Counsel. Ronald LaPena, Fire Marshal, South Adams County Fire District, 6550 East 72nd Avenue, Commerce City, Colorado. I'll make my presentation very brief, and to get started, obviously, I am and the fire district are in support of all of the codes as they are currently written, as promulgated by the International Code Council, which includes the residential sprinkler system, that requirement in the international residential code. We feel that this is obviously a life safety issue. We understand that there are economics attached to this, but my duty is for life safety within the community, and property preservation is second to the life safety of the community. The FEMA and the U.S. Fire Administration has several studies that I'd like to refer to. In 2006, 19% of all reported fires occurred in one and two family homes, and of those, 19% of the fires caused 66% of all deaths, which was a number of over 2,100 deaths in the U.S. Ms. Calamino indicated smoke detectors aren't effective early warning system. There's no doubt about that. I agree with that. Sprinklers are a life safety issue as well, and to address that, when sprinklers alone are installed in residences, again, this is the U.S. Fire Administration and FEMA in this report, when sprinklers alone are installed, the chances of dying in a fire are reduced by 69% as compared to a residence without sprinklers. When smoke alarms are installed only, you can expect a reduction in the death rate by 63%. When both are installed, smoke detectors and sprinkler system, a reduction of 82% of dying in a residential fire. The other thing that I would like to address is the amount of water that is discharged in a sprinkler system. In a NFPA, the National Fire Protection Association, the system is installed to the standards, has an average discharge of 25 gallons per minute from one head, and if the fire department responds and with manual suppression, the use of a two-and-a-half-inch hand line in the same amount of time that the sprinkler discharged 350 gallons, we would be discharging in the neighborhood of 5,000 gallons of water. Again, I wanted to make this as brief as possible. We obviously are in ask the council's consideration to retain the residential sprinkler requirement as it is written in the international residential code. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the council for Mr. LaPena? Mr. McAdonick?
Thanks so much for coming tonight, sir. Just a question on the observation regarding use of sprinklers in residences. The data seems to be a bit different than what we heard from the HBA in terms of the supportable statistics around use of sprinklers in homes and the percent of impact or time that that actually has a positive impact. Your numbers quoted for smoke and sprinkler combinations showed a reduction of 82%, and I believe we heard earlier that there was sufficiently insufficient data on the, available in the HBA data, to support or show reasonable support for use of sprinklers in homes. So, I'm just wondering how the data sources compare, because that's a pretty distinct difference. And if it's valid in one case, then why is it invalid in the other case? I mean, I would like to just have a better understanding of that.
Mr. McAdonick, I'm only citing the United States Fire Administration and the FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Association data that was provided.
Okay. I appreciate that. I just didn't know if there was any greater insight. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else, thank you, Mr. LaPena, for coming in. Mr. Benson, I didn't see you on the list here. It didn't? No, I was just making some Mr. McAdonick. Go ahead.
Mr. LaPena, I appreciate your being here, and I know that your main concern is safety. I mean, that has to be your main concern. It seems to me like we've got kind of a balancing act here of how much do we want to require our builders to put into a residence when no one else around here apparently has this requirement, and it makes our builders, it gives them a disadvantage in trying to sell a house. And I'm thinking maybe we could make it mandatory that a builder has to make it an option to give the homeowner the ability to say, okay, I want to spend. Is it $5,000? Is that what we're talking about, to put such a system in?
Could be more according to square feet.
Could be more.
Could be more. The costs, depending on the study that you list, you reference, the cost can be anywhere from $4.00 to $6.00 per square foot for the sprinkler system. Which increase the value of the home, yes, they do, which would increase any permit fees or things of that nature.
I can see that they would increase the value of the home, but I think a lot of people are worried about that first purchase price, and if it's going to be another, but I think it ought to be made available as an option, just to give people the choice. Here are the stats. Do you want to spend this money and have this kind of protection? And if they don't, well...
One of the issues that I would be in favor of in retaining the sprinkler requirement in our, in residential occupancies is a soft application date. I think 18 months was one of the ordinances that was approved by other jurisdiction. I would be in favor of that, being able to retain the residential sprinkler ordinance.
What other jurisdictions are you saying that they would have 18 months?
Once the code was adopted, there would be an 18-month time period before that would be implemented.
What jurisdictions have done that?
Patrick?
Many of the jurisdictions that have adopted the 2009 additions have stayed the sections on fire sprinkler systems in one and two family dwellings for a period of 18 months to 24 months after the codes have been adopted. And several surrounding jurisdictions have done that. They've done that primarily to give time for their serving water utilities in districts to develop standards, to develop a starting point, if you will. What areas of completed infrastructure would you be willing to dig up and add additional service lines to and things of that nature? So, it's to work out the logistical matters of where to start the installations and what neighborhoods to start them in, that sort of thing. So, many jurisdictions have done that with an 18- to 24-month window.
Like Thornton, Westminster, Northland, whatever? They've all done that.
Northland didn't adopt the sprinklers, Aurora didn't, but Thornton and Westminster did, and they did so with delayed implementation dates. Yes.
Okay. I just think it puts our builders at a big disadvantage if we require that 18 months down the road to, I think, at some point in time, but as the speaker from the Home Builders' Association pointed out, this is, this may not be the right time to insist on this. Thank you.
Mr. Moreno?
Mr. LaPena, thanks for coming to share the perspective of the fire department on this issue. I was curious, other than the residential requirement, do you, does the fire department have a stance on staff's recommendation to eliminate the sprinkler requirement for 5,000 square foot or greater commercial structures?
We do, and thank you for the opportunity to speak on that one issue, Mr. Moreno. This ordinance or amendment to the fire code has been in place well in excess of 20 years, and it proves that it's a very progressive council that has approved it originally and continued to approve this. It's my understanding that there are no economic statistics that show that this has been a detriment to any businesses coming in. Again, it's a life safety issue, and our stand is that we would recommend that council retain the 5,000-square-foot sprinkler amendment.
Thank you.
Mr. Douglas?
Thank you, Fire Marshal, for coming forward. I know as far as the homes go, as far as builders building homes, you didn't see a lot of GFIs go in. I know older homes didn't have the GFIs in them. So, as far as they have electrical fires, there's probably less electrical fires than there used to be. High rampage boards, as far as so many sockets per so many feet. I mean, I think the homeowners have done their homework as far as those go, as far as preventing fires and all. Do you have anything as far as kitchen fires or most used fires as far as Adams County? What do you see as far as...
I do not have any specific statistics as to fires that have occurred within our jurisdiction with me for the presentation this evening. But I certainly will research that and have that information available for council.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, thank you, Mr. LaPena, for coming in.
Thank you.
Ryan?
Mr. Mayor, we've presented a lot of information this evening. The two topics in particular that we've talked about the most relate to fire sprinkler systems. They're both complex issues. Let me say first that we have tremendous respect for Fire Marshal LaPena. We have a great working relationship with the fire district. We work cooperatively on lots of issues every day, so we don't lightly take a different position on this issue from the fire district. But as Mr. Benson mentioned, it's absolutely a question of balance. There's no right or wrong answer here, so we're certainly interested in any feedback or direction council may wish to provide in the alternative. If council would like us to do some additional research or analysis on any of the topics, we'd be happy to do that and bring that information back to you.
Mr. Bullock?
We're about to enter 2012, when the international code for 2012 will be enacted, and I don't know, I doubt very seriously that they would drop this from their code, but does anybody offhand know when that code is going to come forward? Oh, Mr. Buckley, that's...
Okay. That code is currently under publication now and should be available, generally no later than March is when they come out. So, the 2012 has gone through all the code change cycles. Yes, the sprinkler provisions are still intact, and it will be available in the spring.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Moreno?
Yeah, I have some questions of staff regarding a few of these issues. On the issue about energy conservation provisions, I believe I read that only two of our local home builders are currently not exceeding those standards. So, my question, I guess, is do we really need a soft compliance date when only two are not currently meeting?
We, and the Building Safety Division, thought that that was a reasonable solution. These builders that are not very active right now, that aren't in compliance with the '09 provisions, and we wanted to give them an opportunity to, if they needed training from the building department on the provisions that we will be enforcing, if they needed time to draw up new house plans, their master model plans, consistent with the timeframe for updating other master models, that collectively that that would make sense to bring them along. The other builders are right there at the '09 codes already, and we felt that it was a fair solution. But you raise a very good point, sir.
Thank you. The other question I have regarding the amendment regarding the 5,000-square-foot or greater commercial buildings, through your research, did you find any information about why that specific provision was adopted in the first place?
I could not. I found no information at all as to the origins and background of why that came into effect. I suspect, and Mr. LaPena may chime in on this too, knowing from the fire district's background, but I would suspect that a voluntary force, lots of industry, lots of business going on in the city, response times, things of that nature, sending fire crews into buildings, that sort of thing, were all considerations.
Thank you. And regarding that, we are the only local jurisdiction that does have that amendment in place, correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct. That's correct.
And in the 2009 international code, what is the requirement in which commercial buildings must be sprinkled? What's the square footage in the code?
It varies based on the type of construction, whether you're building out of wood, combustible construction materials, or non-combustible materials, and then also whether or not you are protecting those materials with passive fire-resistant systems such as flame-resistant, fire-resistant drywall, and then the occupancy, what's the building going to be used for. So, for example, in a hazardous building, group H occupancy, which generally deal with chemicals and manufacturing processes with hazardous materials, you almost immediately have to sprinkle those buildings. Hospitals, things of that nature. But in other buildings, it's based on square footage. The building code, some of the oldest provisions in the code go back to how much square footage is allowed per story, the height of the building, how much open space is around it where firefighting can be accomplished from the exterior, many factors like that. So, there's several tables and provisions in the code that we look at in trying to determine if a building does need a fire sprinkler system.
And by adopting the 2009 code, are there provisions that are mandatory to be enacted retroactively, or is it just going forward?
Going forward. The city uses the international existing buildings code for applying provisions retroactively to buildings, and it's, we get entirely out of the international building code and move over to the existing building code, and that gives us direction based on the renovations and level of alterations that are occurring in a building as to when you have to upgrade existing fire protection systems.
Thank you.
Mr. Bullock?
He asked the same question I was going to ask, but he got even deeper in it than I do, I was going to.
Okay. My concerns with the fire sprinkler program in the 2009 building code is that without the metro area adopting it as a whole, it puts us at a very, big disadvantage competitively in the marketplace for our home builders, and I'm worried about that because with this economy where we're at, and the past codes haven't had that in there. Another concern of mine regarding that is... Another concern of mine regarding that is, what is the trigger point at which someone wants to renovate an older home, say in the Titchy subdivision? At what point would that code kick in, and they would have to try to fit in a sprinkler system within one of those homes?
The provisions for fire sprinkler systems in the residential code are not retroactive to any residential property under any circumstances.
Good.
So even if, unless you tore down to the ground, straight off and start it over.
All right. So just a renovation would not trigger that to have to be upgraded?
Addition, second stories, nothing.
Okay.
Now, that's only anything under the residential code.
Right. Well, I know all of our developers and builders are suffering with the poor economy. The city's revenues are suffering, and if our friends in Thornton and Northland and some of these other would have adopted, it would make it easier for us to adopt it, but to be competitive in the marketplace in our community, it makes it very difficult. And if I was in Mr. Lepena's shoes as the Fire Marshal, I would be taking the same stand he's taking. But I have to look at the economics of our community as well. So looking forward to seeing what the staff brings back for adoption and how the council reacts to those issues. On the 5,000-square-foot per requirement on the industrial, I know we had a situation some years back where the city built a dome for the sand and ice, sand and salt for ice remover, and the situation was if it would have been just a little bit bigger, it would have fit into that 5,000-square-feet. And is there a way to opt out of that on a building like that where all it would be doing is spraying down sand and salt? Because I think we run into a problem there by over-regulating as well. So with that being as brief as it is in our codes, does, do we not have a negative impact there when we run across one of those situations, or does the Fire Department take that into account and say, "All you're going to be doing is, if there's a fire in here, it's just going to water, salt, and sand." The building is cinder block.
That's a very good point, sir. It, the way it's written currently, staff has not given permission to waive that for certain buildings. Now, that is certainly an option that could be explored if council so desires, but the way it is now, there's no provision for me.
On that particular amendment, I don't have a problem keeping it in place for the Fire Department as the safety side of it. It's been in place for 20 years. However, when it comes to buildings that should be exempted, such as a salt dome, that there's nothing in there but sand and salt, those sprinklers, if they were to kick on, would cause more of a hazard with the residual that came off of that salt and sand than if the fire just burned in there. So I think we have to have a common sense standpoint, and you, as a building official, have to have some room to work with Mr. Lepena to determine, you know, if it's in a building that there's nobody in there and it's something of a salt and sand type of thing, I think we'd go too far over the edge. So I'd like to see some kind of middle ground on that 5,000-square-foot limit when you bring it back to the council to take care of some of those issues. Anyone else? Mr. Moreno, did you have another question?
Yes. Regarding issue number three, the updating of the master home models, how significant is the change that needs to occur between how they currently submit their master home models and the new code?
Incrementally, there are not a lot of code changes that would require redesigns necessarily. There are some big-ticket items in the code that trust design, for example, now requires some loading considerations for attic storage and things like that. It's basically to have the record that we have these plans reviewed under the '09 code for compliance. Many of the builders have already updated their plans in other communities, and so they have their models ready, but we wanted to not ask them to bring them all in at one time. They may be only selling regularly some of their prime models, and so the six-month window is designed to give them some flexibility. Maybe that plan that hasn't been a big seller for them, then they don't need to bring that in until they have a pre-sold, and then they could bring that to us, and we would turn it around for them. But we need to have the record that these plans have been reviewed under the '09 code, but it's not going to require redraw of floor plans necessarily. Most of the provisions relate to energy upgrades and a few other items, but they do, you know, pay their architects to sit down, whether they're redrawing the same thing and just drawing 2009 versus 2003. There's a few incremental changes in there, don't get me wrong, but we wanted to give them that time and just soften that for them.
Thank you. I guess I'll just, a brief comment as well. I do agree with you, Mr. Mayor, that I think a mandate such as the residential fire sprinklers will put us at a competitive disadvantage among other communities, and at this time, we need to be making sure that we help the home-building industry grow and not inhibiting it. The other issue is that, Mr. Benson, I thought, brought up a great point, and that's a sense that there might be middle ground here in putting the choice in the hands of the consumer. And if a home buyer is, would like to have their home sprinkled for safety reasons and all, I also noticed in one of the documents that there is some home insurance cost savings there as well, that that be made available to them. I think that might be a good middle ground, so that's something I'd be interested in staff pursuing.
Even if the council chose to remove those provisions from the code as mandatory, they could remain in there for options. The biggest hurdle would be for the sanitation district to come up with their standards and agree to it, but otherwise, they, we could permit and inspect residential system on adoption of the codes as an option rather than mandatory. The tools are there.
Thank you.
Mr. Bullock?
When staff takes us back to bring back the changes and review it, what is the turnaround time on this? And part B of this question is, what are the major changes in the 2012 International Code? Or are there any major changes that would affect this 2009? Or would it be simpler for us to adopt the 2012 if that time limit would be in compliance with it coming out in March?
We could certainly consider the 2012 code. That is not a problem. I am a little concerned, I have not done a full analysis yet on the 2012 provision, so I don't know what new wrinkles and new provisions they've put in there. I believe cursory review tells me that they're fairly small compared to what happened in the '09 version. I guess the biggest reason now that we would want to stay on the '09s is we are not way out ahead of the rest of the metro jurisdictions who have just now begun in the last 12 months to really go to the 2009 addition. It's a big leap for builders to go from the '03 to the '09. I think it's important that we get on about a three-year cycle so that the bumps, if you will, aren't so big for them, so it's regular, and then we sort of vet out these big-ticket items for them and soften them and have discussions with them and what their expectations are. But my opinion now is that we should probably stay almost a full code cycle behind, and as the 2012 versions are out, we're moving to the '09, and as the 2015 versions, we would be ready for the 2012. And that's just so that we're not trying to lead the metro area necessarily, and just that risk of being out ahead of everybody, I think, is a concern.
Kate, thank you. I mean, that answer is the great answer. I mean, that explains it all to me why you do what you do. Kate, thank you.
I have a couple of questions for you, Mr. Buckley. One is, is there any statistics on if there's a malfunction in a sprinkler system in a residential home? Say the folks went on vacation, for some reason it's going off, or a head goes bad, whatever may happen, what kind of damages could they expect to that home on a problem with the sprinkler system?
That's a very good question, and I don't know that I have a complete answer for that. I could certainly research that. I can tell you this, residential fire sprinkler systems are not monitored in the same way that a commercial fire sprinkler system is. Typically, if you have a flow in a system in this building, in addition to the fire alarm going off here, in many cases, it dials up the Fire District automatically and prompts them to respond if there's a trouble alarm at this building. But in the residential, there is no dial-up that goes with that, so feasibly, that system could run for an extended period of time before anybody would be aware of it.
Right. And, you know, common sense, we all have plumbing fixtures within our homes, but by adding a sprinkler, you're doubling the risk, I believe, with the extra pipe and the extra fixtures. So that would be another concern of mine, is the damage that can occur to a home with a faulty sprinkler. And then I have one more question, and I'm going to ask it because we have some residents in our audience that are here that have mobile home parks. How would that affect a mobile home? Would all new mobile home requirements require, as a single-family dwelling, the sprinklers?
Mobile homes, manufactured housing, are all regulated in Colorado by the Division of Housing, and they are permitted and constructed through that organization, that state agency. And I would assume then if the state agency adopts the '09 code with those provisions intact, that manufactured housing would have to have sprinklers. I have not had any discussions with the Division of Housing. I do not know where their intent is. Mobile homes, true mobile homes, are regulated by the Housing, Department of Housing and Urban Development, and the enforcement of standards and regulations is passed from them, from the federal government, to the State Division of Housing. And unless HUD changed their regulations and their standards to require sprinkler systems, then true mobile homes would not be affected by this at all, and we would not, as a local government, have the authority to supersede that. We have to accept HUD units, HUD mobile homes, as is, with some caveats, they have to meet our snow loads and wind speed, but otherwise, we have authority over the work that's done on-site, the sewer and water connections, electrical connections, things like that. But the manufactured house, whether it's a modular home, excuse me, or a mobile home, is pretty much hands-off inside the building unless, and that's all left to the state.
Well, and I bring that up because Contra Estates had some manufactured homes going in there, and I think from that perspective, we could see builders wanting to go to manufactured product to stay away from that type of issue of having to install sprinklers. And I think our city could see an upswing in the desire for more manufactured homes or homes that are manufactured outside the city brought in and covered by the state if the state doesn't adopt the same requirements that we're being faced with. And I don't, if we're going to have a regulation, we need to have a regulation. If we're not, we don't, you know, but to have some be able to circumvent the system by doing a manufactured product, and there are some very nice manufactured products out there, but I see the industry could use that as an advantage to get around the sprinkling of the homes, so that also is a concern of mine. But like Mr. Thomas with his mobile home park, something like that, if the state did adopt it, pretty much could restrict any of the new, of our mobile home parks from being able to replace with any new product. That's all I have. I don't see any other questions, but at least you have a touch on what the council's looking at.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time this evening. Appreciate it.
Mr. City Manager, would you like to do the 2011-2012 Snow Response Plan before we do the council orientation, or you want to get right into the council orientation?
I am sure the staff that are presenting the Snow and Ice Plan would love to go before the council orientation.
Well, that was my plan, is to give them an opportunity to not have to sit through our orientation.
I'm not saying they wouldn't like to sit through council orientation, but I do think they would probably prefer to go first.
Right. Now, since this is a study session, do we need to amend the agenda to have them come first, City Clerk? Do you want the agenda amended to allow the Snow and Ice Plan prior to the council orientation?
Just to be consistent with the way you've operated in the past, when you change the agenda, you have had a motion to change the agenda.
Even in a study session?
Even though it's a study session.
No problem. I'll ask the council for what's their desire. Mr. Bullock?
I'll make a motion to change the study session's agenda to let the 2011-2012 Integrated Snow Removal Plan go before the council orientation.
Mr. Bullock, or Mr. Moreno?
Second to motion.
You have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion's carried. We'll go ahead and hear the 2011-2012 Snow Response Plan if staff wants to come forward and present that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back in the spring, council raised some questions about the city's Snow and Ice Removal Plan. We committed at that time to bring back presentation to council, to educate council about the Public Works and Parks and Recreation Plan for removing snow during the winter months, and so Mr. Clements and Mr. Hoover are here to do that.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. Appreciate the opportunity to discuss the city's Snow and Ice Control Plan, especially with the revised agenda. We appreciate that also. Bob's telling me IOMs now, so. Snow and Ice Control Program is a critical one for the city, and I'm very proud of the people that carry out this program from year to year and make it work, and you'll hear about those people tonight. For perspective, the budget for 2011 for the Snow and Ice Control Program is $300,421. That's about 12% of the streets and traffic operations budget of $2.5 million approximately. Who better to talk about the Snow and Ice Control Program than Sam Hoover? Sam is the Streets and Traffic Program Manager. He's been with the city for 33 years. He started as a street maintenance worker, so he's seen all aspects of the Snow and Ice Control Program over that time as a worker, supervisor, and now as a manager. So without further ado, Sam will make that presentation. We'll be here for questions when it's completed.
Thank you, Greg. I'm having a slight difficulty, it looks like.
They have to load it for you first.
Have to what?
They'll load it for you first. I think it's Tom. Tom has to load it first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm sorry for the delay here. Slight technical difficulty. The intent of this presentation this evening is to give you guys an idea of how the Snow and Ice Program works. We thought maybe it'd be a little bit better to have a proactive approach, tell you what you can expect during the snow season, than to react and try to explain why we're not doing certain streets or certain things, so. The program goal, you guys can all read, so I'm not going to go through it all, but basically, it's to provide fiscally responsible service during snow and ice events by removing or displacing snow and ice from designated priority streets. Also, city-maintained sidewalks, trails, parking lots, that type of thing. trails, parking lots, that type of thing. In my previous statement, you'll notice I said "priority streets." One of the reasons we have to prioritize the system is we have over 770 lane miles of roadway in Commerce City. So a lane mile is roughly something, an area of street that's 12-foot wide and a mile long. So most of your residential streets, if you travel a mile, that's two lane miles. Most of them are at least 24-foot wide. To put this in this perspective a little bit, I just went to Vegas last week, and it's roughly 770 miles from my house to the strip down in Vegas. So we have quite an intense, or quite a lot of roads out there to maintain. And of course, we're limited in the numbers of people that we have to maintain those. So out of those 770 lane miles of roadway, we do snow and ice removal on 260 lane miles. We also do snow removal on city parking lots, sidewalks, and trails. I'll kinda go over the priority streets a little. Number-one priorities are major arterials. These are streets like 104th, Tower Road, 88th, 72nd, Quebec Parkway. So again, they're your major arterials. They connect most of the city and connect basic services like fire. It says hospitals. We don't really have a hospital, but it, it does get us to clinics and that type of stuff. It also gets us access to other city entities such as South Adams Water and Sanitation District over on 70th Avenue. Our priority number-two streets are remaining arterials and collector streets. So these are more of the major traffic-volume streets that provide access to schools and other government services. Priority-three streets are minor collectors. Those would be streets like the hills south of 56th Avenue, bus routes, 107th and Fulton, a little industrial area. Those kind of streets are typically a number-three street. And finally, we have a number-four priority street, and they are basically residential areas. Priority-four streets are only plowed when snow accumulations completely block traffic movement. Here's a map, it's a little bit hard to see, that kinda shows you what these priority streets are. The number red street, the red streets that you see there are number-one priorities. As you can see, it's things like 96, 104th. The green streets are number-two priorities. And then the yellow streets are number-three priorities. All the residentials, like I said before, are number-four priorities. We have similar priorities for parking lots and sidewalks. As you can imagine, during a snow event, the police department, we need to keep that open. The civic center, we need to keep the MSC open so snow crews can get in and out of there, that type of thing. They're number-one priorities. Number-two priority are the parking areas up in Derby. Number-three priorities, then we'd move into, once we have these streets, we've gone through them, we've got them open, or we have these parking lots, we have them open and, and passable. Then we'd move to our number-threes, which are city parks, sidewalks around the parks, sidewalks around this facility and other city, city facilities. Number-four priorities are things like the service center up on Highway Two, Adams County Library. I believe they have a contractor now that does a lot of their work. But those would be number-four Next, I'll move into a class storm. And we have to, we have to classify a storm so we know what treatment objective we're gonna use. So class-one storm. This is a typical winter storm in Colorado. It lasts for around 12 hours, usually a little bit less, and it has accumulations of less than four inches. Now, during that class-number-one storm, we will attempt to clear snow from all travel lanes of a number-one priority and number-two priority street, and then provide at least one direction of travel on a number-three priority. And typically, we do that with no problem. We move into a class-two storm. This is a storm a little bit more severe than a one. It's gonna last probably longer than 12 hours and have snow accumulations of 48 inches. On this type of storm, we're gonna concentrate first on number-one priorities and number-twos, keeping them pretty well cleaned off in all travel lanes. And then we're gonna move to the number-three priorities once those are completed. But we'll concentrate a little bit more on number-one and twos. And then a class-three storm is a storm predicted to be severe in nature. So this is basically a blizzard. It's gonna have more than eight inches of snow, accompanied with strong or gusting winds, and there're probably gonna be some drifting. In this kind of a situation, we really need to concentrate on those number-one priorities so we can make sure all of those essential services, fire, police, that type of thing, are kept open. As soon as we have those cleared, then we'll move to number-twos, and finally, to number-threes. I'd also like to add that as part of our snow plowing operation, we move snow from the center of the roadway to the right edge of the road. That means that occasionally we do get a little bit of snow on the sidewalk. We try real hard not to get any snow on the sidewalk. We try to train the operators. We explain to them why it's important to keep it off there. We know that, as a resident, that if you're out there shoveling and you just get done and a plow comes by and covers your sidewalk, that it can be extremely frustrating. So we really try not to get it on the walks, but occasionally we do. City forces will not go back and shovel the sidewalk again. This, again, is just going into the treatment objectives I explained in the prior slide. How do we accomplish this? There's a total of 32 staff members. That's Street and Park Division staff members. Out of those 32 staff members, we have to man eight districts, have a crew chief out there helping direct those resources, those snow plows, and be able to cover vacations, illnesses, excuse me, and workers' comp cases. So we have 32 people total. If a snowstorm is anticipated, greater than 30% chance snow is anticipated, we break into two 12-hour shifts. Those shifts run from 4:00 in the afternoon to 4:00 in the morning, around the clock. Like said, they're comprised of nine members. Parking lot crews are comprised of four members. And any additional staff that we may have during the course of a storm are usually put out shoveling walks around city facilities. This page shows the equipment available to fight snow and ice. And the reason I plug this piece in with the personnel and the equipment is to kinda let you know that our, we really don't have all that many resources for the number of lane miles we do. The average number of lane miles that are plowed and sanded by other governmental agencies are around 30 lane miles per crew member. Commerce City is doing anywhere between 35 and 43 lane miles per crew member. So we try to get the best use we can out of those resources that we have available. As you can see, I mentioned before, there were eight districts, and we have 10 trucks. So it's not like we have a lot of extra trucks sitting around. If, if we have a truck down, it can really impact operations. New in the fall of 2009, we received council support to go from a sand-salt mixture to melt ice to an ice slicer, a product called Ice Slicer. Ice slicer is hotter than salt. Salt will make, will melt ice and snow down to about 20 degrees. There's other factors, things such as solar gain, is the sun shining, the amount or volume of traffic on the roadway. But essentially, 20 degrees, salt becomes ineffective. The Ice Slicer we switched to works to, we've had it work, they say it works down to zero, but we've had it work to minus three. So it's been a pretty good investment. We, it's definitely more expensive than salt and sand. We spent about $80 a ton for this Ice Slicer. This material is stored at the MSC. Some other savings that we got, even though the material is more, more expensive, there's no cleanup, there's no residue left. So back in 2008, when we would go out and do snow removal, it was costing about $90,000 a year to do the actual snow removal, and about $100,000 a year to go out and clean up sand and salt. So that wasn't real productive. And of course, you know, it has a negative impact on the environment and that type of thing. So the Ice Slicer has been a real benefit for us. This is a, just a picture of Magnolia Street, north of 72nd Avenue. You can't read that writing on the bottom, but this was taken on a day we were using salt and sand on Magnolia, and it was two degrees below zero. So you can see the impact that the salt and sand had on the roadway. Virtually nothing, we were just providing some traction. But in that same area, we were using Ice Slicer on the roads in Derby. This is kind of a test section. Same day, this is on Magnolia, I believe, right by High Lo there. So 70, 73rd, I believe it is. And you can see the melting occurring on that side street, and the previous slide with just sand and salt. So we have a pretty effective program. We review it every year. We go through and, and watch numbers of traffic counts and that kind of stuff. We add streets as necessary, as subdivisions are built, to keep the program going. This year, there has been a change since actually the first of the year, and we have, we're in the process of amending the IGA with Adams County. So there's a fairly substantial area over by the old high school, north of 70th Avenue, that the city will no longer take care of. Most of that area is unincorporated Adams County. The area south of 80th Avenue, from Highway Two to Brighton Road, is basically reverting back to Adams County's maintenance. And we're gonna take some major arterials such as 120th Avenue, Brighton Road, from 104th to 120th, those kind of things. So we're actually getting away from the maintenance agreement a little bit. The county is gonna maintain more of what is theirs. The city will maintain more of what is ours to maintain. This is the dome that Sean had mentioned earlier. And had this thing have been, been about 500 square foot larger, we'd have had sprinklers in it. So it kinda goes along with that balance of what you sprinkle in which dome. But I'm certainly willing to entertain any questions at this point.
Mr. Bullock?
I'm sorry, that was left on from the last presentation.
Mr. McAldowney?
Get my mute button to work. Thank you very much for the update tonight. You touched on some things that we've seen in place now for a couple, three years, based on some of the key changes to the, to the plan. And I think the, the indications are that the work done those few years ago has been very solid, not a lot of change to this point. And I think where you've had opportunity to fine-tune, you certainly have done so. Just to kind of tout some of those successes, I think you touched on them very briefly, but the move from the sand-salt mixture to the Ice Slicer mixture was really, I think, a huge gain. And, you know, I, I was even just to kind of go back reading some of the, the material on the benefits of Ice Slicer. I know folks are here in Colorado very paranoid about mag chloride and the impacts on the environment, but everything that I'm able to find on the Ice Slicer product is that it's actually fairly environmentally friendly, allowing for a lesser tonnage of material to go down on the ground. And please tell me if I'm misreading this, but it sounds like it's a better, it's better all the way around, in addition to just the, the cleanup efforts that you talked about doing away with when we got rid of the sand-salt mix.
Well, the Ice Slicer certainly isn't any more corrosive than salt is. And it depends on whose study you look at. If you look at the Salt Institute study, of course, there's some detrimental effects from Ice Slicer and vice versa. But we have found it's a little bit more corrosive than the mixture we used before, because we were using such a low concentration of salt. So it's a little more corrosive than what we saw in the past, but it's not nearest corrosive, doesn't have near the effect that driving through a liquid mag chloride or something has on your vehicle.
Okay. The, the other thing that I've read that was intriguing about the, the product is that it's actually better for our concrete roadways, that it helps minimize some of the freeze thaw impact that we have. That's the, a big cause of damage to those roadways. And I know we all wanna see as little damage to those as possible, especially given the warranty work happening this year. So just hats off to you and the team. Again, much appreciated for all that you do.
Well, I, I certainly appreciate that. And I won't stand here and take credit for all of this, because it really goes back to this outstanding team of individuals we have out here that work for the city, with both the Parks and the Streets Department.
Okay, Mr. Moreno?
Sam, thanks for your presentation. I was relieved to see that some of the major governmental entities are on the priority list. For example, South Adams Water, and received some reports in our last snow season that 70th Avenue was not cleared, and, you know, people had some trouble, because a lot of people still pay their water bills in person, had some trouble accessing that road. So I was glad to see that. Regarding Highway Two, obviously, that's the state's responsibility, I assume?
Correct.
Okay. And a question about, typically, when employees are required to work graveyard shifts, and I noticed that you had two 12-hour shifts on there, typically, when they're required to work those overnight shifts, they're paid at a highly slight, a slightly higher rate than normal to accommodate for that. Do we pay our employees a slightly higher rate for working overnight shifts?
No, there is, at this point in time, there's no shift differential. But there's some other advantages to working that late-night shift. And if you're a plow operator, those, those advantages are clear to you, because you're not putting up with traffic and citizens and people trying to pull you over to clean their driveway and those types of things. Also, we, we do allow some special leave time. So if you show up to work today and, and we decide it's gonna snow, or it looks like it's gonna snow, we'll send you home with pay to, to rest and get ready for that second shift.
Great, thanks.
So there's some- So, there's some other untangible things.
Sure. And then, the other question I had, you know, obviously residential streets are low on the priority list as they should be. Are there ever situations, though, where those residential streets are actually plowed? I haven't, I don't recall ever seeing that.
Well, we had a situation in two thousand seven. It wasn't a pleasant situation for me, but if you recall, we had really not all that much snow, but some real severe cold temperatures, minus, you know, it snowed, I think, right around Christmas one year, and it really didn't melt until about March. And it wasn't really the amount of snow, but just the cold temperatures. And what happens is, a lot of times, by the time we make that decision to go in and do those residential streets, which we did during those storms, the roads are so packed that you just really can't be effective in getting that snow and ice out of there. So, we have some other options available to us now, if we're put in that same situation, and you know, if that occurs, council will obviously be a part of directing us to go into those neighborhoods and providing that service.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else, Sam, I want to ask you, do you guys still have the opportunity to bring in subcontractors if there's an anomaly type of storm, where you get that two feet, and you have to start opening up some of them residential areas, and you need extra folks to help with that?
Yes, in fact, we have two fairly large contractors that I have the numbers for. I have nighttime phone numbers for the owners and that type of stuff. With that being said, it's important that we acknowledge that these people are sometimes on retainer by other cities. So, if there's a contract and there's a yearly retainer to hold back Colorado asphalt to do plowing for you, this city or entity that holds those retainers will get those services first. And then, we don't have a retainer with any of these companies, but I'm confident that we have enough resources available out there that we can get those companies in there sooner and plow those residential streets if needed.
Okay. Now, my other question is, I know there's been some discussion about taking over the maintenance of Highway Two, which I have an interest in, and having Commerce City maintain the section of Highway Two through the city, so that we can make sure that connectivity to both portions of the city are maintained. Do you have an estimate of how many employees and trucks it would take to have to manage that in a snow situation?
I think we've looked at this, Mr. Mayor, for the last couple of years, and that information is available. It'll need to be updated, and that's something that could be done and presented.
Okay. Other than that, I just would recommend to this council that if you haven't went on a ride-along in a snowplow during an event, that I recommend you do it, just so you understand some of the stresses of driving that plow, and what these guys are up against on these twelve-hour shifts. It's not just trying to stay awake, it's snow flying with the lights hitting it, and the different effects, and trying to avoid vehicles. I got the, I had the pleasure for about ten years of driving those plows, and I think it's important for the people that regulate how that process is done, to go out and appreciate it in the passenger seat for a few hours. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, I had a question for you. Thanks for your presentation. In the green area that you had on the map there, I know back in October, we had that snowstorm that kind of shut things down, the schools were closed for that one day. As you go around through the neighborhoods there, there's areas where there's connectivity, because I know you don't go through every residential street, but when they come off a side street, and there's a connecting street, but they stay on their path, if there's any way, I'm not sure how much time it would take, but just to kind of push some of that heavier snow, because everything is plowed sort of right there, and they kind of stop, and they just continue to go down, so you have this blockage of the road, and then as you go down the road, they continue to go down, there's other sections that add to it. So, it's, I'm not sure how they could just push that up there, just so that heavy part, those big, huge chunks aren't in the middle there, people trying to, you know, access that main road.
We do try to address that. As the storm subsides, and we'll go into a cleanup mode, and as we go into that cleanup mode, we'll try to clean up intersections and areas like that and that type of thing. Fortunately, this year so far, even during the previous storms this year, I think we've only been out twice this year, and I think even when the school was closed for that day or two, was mostly due to some heating issues or something, because the roadways really weren't all that bad, the roadways were still pretty warm and stuff. But, yeah, the short answer is, we do try to go back in there and clean up some of those intersections.
Okay.
Unfortunately, sometimes the weather beats us too.
That's true. I appreciate that.
And Mr. Douglas, as well, on that note, the plow drivers aren't driving a fixed plow setup, they're driving a plow that is universal, where they can change directions with the plow, and during the training process, they're trained to, when they cross another roadway, to straighten that plow out and try to take the majority of it through that intersection, and then angle their plow back, so that it takes the bulk of that through there. So, I know that the drivers are cognizant of that, and they have the capabilities to reduce some of that. Councilwoman Elliott?
Good evening. Thank you for your presentation. This thought just came to mind when we were talking about the contracting of other companies in dire need. Would this maybe be a possibility to maybe recruit other employees from other departments pending that, you know, obviously, like maybe have them on a sign-up sheet, if you will, pending that they would be, that they would have their CDL license and trained to do so? Kind of like a last resort, like these people would be considered before contracting out? I mean, it's just a thought, I mean, I know there's a lot more that needs to go into it, but I just thought I would at least express that idea, maybe as a cost incentive for the city as well.
We have considered that in the past, and we'll continue to consider that. We have a lot of trained staff, as I showed earlier, between the thirty-two trained staff we have, if we have an emergency event, and we can split those up into two groups of sixteen, now we've run into an issue where we no longer have the large equipment that we would need to open those side streets and stuff.
Right.
We have some small plows and that type of thing. Parks Department runs a lot of them. Where we really need our help, I've found, is shoveling sidewalks and keeping city facilities open, and when it comes down to doing that, when somebody thinks they're going to sit in a plow truck and drive around, and it's kind of fun, you know, I mean, for the first few hundred days you do it, it's kind of fun, but when, we get a lot of volunteers for that.
Right.
But, we don't get a lot of volunteers who really want to help us go out and shovel and that kind of stuff, and if we could get that kind of support, it would enable us to get the personnel we already have trained into more equipment.
Okay.
So, we continue to look at those things, though, because there's other staff around the city that is capable of running a snowplow, sure.
And I assume that, I just didn't know exactly what was in place, and I understand it's pending, you know, any vehicles that would be available, obviously, if you've got majority of your staff out, you're not really going to have any other vehicles for the remaining staff, so I understand that, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
And as soon as there's a sign-up list posted, I'm sure all our executive staff will jump right on that shoveling snow on the sidewalks portion. You guys are in, right? Okay. Mr. Teeter?
Thank you, Mr. Hoover. Do we use ATVs on snowplows for the sidewalks?
Currently, no. We have some, a lot of the walks that we do are wide, so I'll throw trails in there with walks. So, if you look at the sidewalk in front of this facility, it's six or eight foot wide, so we have a Ford Ranger, or a couple of Ford Rangers with small plows on them, and we're able to use those on larger sidewalks and that type of thing. We have looked into ATVs a little bit, though, there's some areas I think that could be real advantageous to us.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else, thanks, Sam, for your presentation, and you and Greg are more than welcome to stay around for council orientation.
Well, I'd like to thank you for moving us up in the agenda, I appreciate that, and you have a nice evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to have the council orientation, but before we move into that, I would like to allow the council a short, brief recess to use the facilities or what have you.
Ten minutes, folks, and we'll be back.
You know what, sometimes we, here's what we've done in the past, when you have a major event, there's a square, the staff will go out and buy everybody, take that complex or something. So, they take that.
And I figured.
When I plow, what we do is, nobody can take the same time, if it was more of a severe storm, so what we would do is, when you plow, we'd contact the crew chief and say, or the crew chief contact us and say, okay, there's a little window in the weather, plow driver number one, take your half hour lunch, get something to eat, as soon as you're back on the street, contact me so I can release plow driver number two. So, they watch it, they try.
I figured as much, I was thinking of those different ones, which is nice that everyone, because it was difficult for people to pull or stop at the doors, you're not technically supposed to be pulling into.
It happened to be on a couple cases, but it's happened, every plow driver would pull in to stop and go in and get something to eat, and you know, lots of people sat there. You go in there, sit down, kind of have where your stuff come out. Should we just switch over? Would there be fifteen tons?
Oh, no.
And it's going to be a little, it's a pretty smart one.
Moving it out, moving it out.
Sometimes we have to take it over, or we have to load it back up.
I was thinking.
See, you have a chance, go for a ride-along.
Oh, yeah, I was going to do that.
Just call up Brian and tell him, I want to go on a ride-along.
Shoot, train me, shoot.
Yeah, but I'm not, I'm not sure if I can go on a ride-along.
I could do well, though.
You know what, I have a hard time doing my own, my back just gets taken. Hey, I wanted you to take on this whole sprinkler system.
Well, I agree, I don't, I don't really care for much.
I mean, it could be in the range of forty thousand per house.
Yeah, it'll be more than what they're saying, I'm not for it.
Well, economically, I don't think we'd need, safety-wise, if it was cost-effective, yeah, I'd be all for it.
I'm all for sprinkling industrial buildings, things like that. Firefighters cannot, they got their hands full.
Sure. But you know what, like on this, like on this snowmobile, if it was six thousand square feet, I mean, common sense, let's take a look at it. It doesn't house any people.
We should, we should, like for common sense.
Exactly, and so.
You know, it's got to be, these people got to be able to handle it.
Well, they said, they can't, once it's in there, they can't, they can't bend from it, and I'm thinking, you know what, common sense, if you had to turn around and the four winds, or the, or all the people are in there, but they want to face it on this, so I'm thinking, come on, there's got to be a common sense, just common sense.
It's common sense, it's got to be able to play.
I saw it happen.
Even if we got a sign.
Oh, you can't wait.
Yeah, we'll find it.
Okay, you ready for the orientation?
No, I've been through this house sprinkler thing before, and I knew, I know he would help me to say something.
You know what, you got to be careful you don't get yourself hot in that.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I got a little bit.
Yeah, I did.
Who wants to sign up for this?
No.
Okay, if we can go ahead and get back to our meeting. Let's take care of the council orientation, and I'll turn it over to Brian McBroom.
First of all, thank you, Mayor and members of City Council for the opportunity to present this information this evening. We have a couple of options. One would be to review each page of this document in excruciating detail. The other option is really just to highlight what we believe are the most important sections of this book. There's a lot of good information in it, and I do want to share some thanks to some key staff people that put this document together that's really gonna be very helpful for years to come. Those key staff people were Michelle Halsted, Michelle Rogers, Lisa Gallegos, and Karen Stevens. Lots of other staff were also involved, but those are the key folks that did the lion's share of the work putting this document together. What we would like to do this evening, on the, on the first page after the letter, there's a table of contents. Our focus tonight is gonna be on tabs two, three, and four of the table of contents, and that's council authority and purpose, council policies, and council meeting procedures. We can certainly present more of the information if you'd like. Given the lateness of the hour, we think it might be best to focus on those key sections. We can answer questions about other tabs. We can also come back and present other tabs in more detail at a, at a later meeting. Also wanted to emphasize that the purpose of having it on the agenda tonight was to provide an overview, particularly the council policies, as they've been adopted by council. It wasn't necessarily intended to be an in-depth discussion of the appropriateness of those policies. I can appreciate that incoming council members might want to revisit some of these policies. That's not the intent this evening. The intent this evening was to provide an overview of the policies as, as they've been adopted. But certainly as part of that, if you'd like to direct us to bring certain policies back for discussion at a later meeting, we'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
With that, I'm going to ask Mr. Gaylor to begin the presentation.
I'm going to go through what I consider relevant points for the orientation. Some of these points are more in line with what the new council members would need to know, because some of the points are points that the past council members are already familiar with. So bear with me on that, and those of you who are past members, bear with the new council members in, in hearing some of this that you may already be familiar with. Also, because of the, of the time constraints here, I think it would be helpful if council lets us get through the material and save questions for later. I originally planned on inviting questions as I went, but if we do that, we'll never get through the material, because there is quite a bit of material if we're gonna cover it in an appropriate manner. So, having said that, I'm going to commence by stating that your authority as a council is derived from the city charter. And section 4.8 of the charter states that the council constitutes the legislative and governing body of the city. And as the legislative and governing body, you set the vision for the city, then adopt policy, laws, and budgets that further that vision. So your responsibility is to set the overlying responsibility for the operation of this city. Now, it, the charter also imposes some constraints on the city council. One of them is that in section 4.19 of the charter, it prevents city council members from having any personal interest in any contract with the city unless the city council votes unanimously that such a contract is in the best interest of the city. And that makes a lot of sense. You have to find unanimously that a contract that you as an individual has with the city has to be in the best interest of the city. The example in, in past, and I don't think this applies to any council member sitting here, but in the past, we have had businessmen in the city sit on the city council as a council member. And that businessman would be in a position to provide product pursuant to a contract with the city. Well, this particular provision of the charter was adopted with that in mind to allow that situation, provided that the entire city council gave its full approval to that, to that contract. Section 4.20 also prevents council members from being employed by the city during their term of office. Now, that does not apply to somebody that's grandfathered in. So if a city council member is employed by the city and then becomes elected as a council member, that provision does not prevent that city council member from continuing that employment. And we've had that situation to develop in, on several occasions. 7.6 of the charter prohibits the city council or any members from dealing directly with any person under the city manager's responsibility. It prohibits the city council and its members from dictating to or in any way interfering with the city manager in the appointment or employment of any person under his authority. Now, that's not to be confused with city council having the ability or authority to approach city staff and ask questions for purposes of inquiry. But we have a separate policy that, that spells out how much time you could require a city staff member to devote to answer specific questions you may have. That happens to be thirty minutes, and we'll come to that. But right here, we're talking about you as a city council member not liking the way staff is conducting business. Your solution is to go to the city manager and tell the city manager what you're concerned with, and then the city manager is responsible for dealing with the issue that, that you have in mind. And here we get to what I've briefly mentioned. Section 7.4 of the charter makes the city manager responsible for administering the departments of the city, except for the city attorney's office. My office is directly under you, I report directly to you. City manager reports directly to you, and the municipal court reports directly to you. The prosecutor's under my responsibility. Assistant city attorneys are my responsibility, and my paralegal is, is under my responsibility. The form of government is often referred to as council-manager form of government. It is similar to the relationship that a chief executive officer might have in private practice in a corporation with the board of directors. The board sets the direction, just like you as a council, you set the direction, the vision, and the chief executive executes the plan. The city manager executes the plan that you set. Charter also defines the following roles. The mayor, in section 4.9, provides that the mayor is the ceremonial head of the city and provides overall meetings of the council. In providing that meetings, the mayor serves as the facilitator for discussions and should strive to conduct council business in an efficient and orderly manner and in accordance with council policies. Now, in the past, city council has appointed me as city attorney as a parliamentarian to help the mayor in facilitating issues that might arise during, and to facilitate resolving issues that might arise during the course of a meeting. So if there becomes a question, is this a proper motion, is somebody out of order, or somebody calls the question, how do you exactly handle that? If the mayor is having questions on that, I am available to assist in that procedure. And the mayor pro tem is appointed by the mayor. If you notice, the city council doesn't appoint the mayor pro tem, and we followed this practice at the, at the organization meeting. The mayor appointed the mayor pro tem, and you did not have to ratify that appointment. The mayor, under the charter, has the sole authority to make that appointment. I might add that if both the mayor and the mayor pro tem are out of the city, not available, and you, you're gonna have a council meeting, then you, as a council, appoint one of you to act as the chair for that particular meeting, and it takes a particular motion that evening, appointing somebody to act as council for the meeting. But in the mayor's absence, the mayor can request that so-and-so be appointed, and then if something comes up during the course of his absence and the mayor pro tem's absence, then the city council, if it needs to be, you call a special meeting and officially appoint somebody. But the mayor doesn't really, under the charter, have authority to appoint just anybody. It's the city council that appoints somebody if both the mayor and mayor pro tem are not in a position to act. Here we get to the actions of the city council, and this is a significant one, and I really wanna emphasize this one, because the question always comes up, and it does invariably. First of all, the city council acts on legislative matters. That's one thing. That's when you pass an ordinance, that's a clear legislative act. You pass a resolution, that's a legislative act. But then we have what we call quasi-judicial hearings. Now, by and large, you as a city council, you sit as a quasi-judicial body, meaning a semi-court, if you will, on zoning cases. That's the prime example. Now, one of you is on the Board of Adjustment. Who is that? I don't recall. Kay Renee is. All right? The Board of Adjustment also acts in a quasi-judicial matter. And liquor license authority, in having their hearings, also acts in a quasi-judicial matter. Now, the significance of that is, if you have a hearing coming up, if an application has been filed with the city for, we'll use a zoning case as the prime example, you are responsible to assure that that hearing is conducted in a fair and impartial manner. So, as oftentimes happens, the developer who's seeking the rezoning calls you and asks for an opportunity to talk to you about an upcoming case, and to show you the plans, and to get your input so that it helps him or her during the course of the hearing. and to get your input so that it helps him or her during the course of the hearing and what they present. Now, that sounds reasonable on his face, but picture this situation. Take it out of the council setting and put it into a court setting, because you're sitting as a judge, so to speak, and you, as an individual, not as a council member, but as an individual, you file a lawsuit, and you're in court, and your opponent is Mr. X, and Mr. X goes to the judge before the court case comes up and takes him to lunch and talks about the case. Well, you can see what kind of a fair or unfair hearing you get when it comes to trial. Same situation here. You, as a council, sitting as a court, as a semi-court, if you will, are not privileged to sit and discuss that case before the hearing. The only thing you should consider with regard to that case is evidence that you hear at the hearing. Now, let's say that you violate that rule of trust. And let's say that you decide to have lunch with one of the parties and discuss the case. And the opponent finds out that you did that, and now you come to the hearing, and you vote, however you vote, and the party that lost, let's say the opponent, who observed you having lunch with the opposition, files a court case. Now, your vote, the argument is, does your one vote change the result? And the argument on behalf of the city would be, no, that would have passed anyway. But most judges won't buy that argument, because they'll say, well, you, as an individual, even though you voted one way, you influenced the council, and as a result, the vote went the way the opponent wanted it to go, and the other side won the case. A court very likely would overturn what you did. Very good argument that it could be overturned. At most, it makes for a strong court case against the city that the hearing was not held in a fair and impartial manner. So, you stay away from discussions with the either side on a case that's going to be or likely to be heard by you in a public hearing context. That's -- and you run into this problem. Not long ago, some of you had a developer contact you and ask you to go over the plans before the hearing. And it's tough, from your perspective, to respond, because on the one hand, you don't want to appear like you're disinterested and don't want to hear, but on the other hand, you need to advise them that you'd like to hear what they have to say at the hearing, but it's evidence that needs to be presented at the hearing, and you're sorry, but you cannot discuss the case before the hearing. I think I've belabored that point enough, but it comes up so often, I wanted to make a good, strong argument for that. Then, the third type of situation is administrative matters. That's simply situations where you get issues presented to you in the way of complaints or compliments, and you want to take some action, or you direct the city manager's office to proceed accordingly, to help solve the problem. That's an example of administrative matter. Another example is that when you decide who's taking a trip, you're authorizing expenditure for this or that, and we'll have some discussion later in this presentation about that. But those kinds of, shall we refer to them as mundane matters, are called administrative matters. Okay? That's not the end. Okay. You got another one? Okay. Here we go into council standards of conduct. Now, these standards of conduct are referred to as council policies, and they're numbered 1 through 22. And if you don't have a book of council policies, do they have a book of the council policies? Not tonight, but I mean, do they have it? Okay. So, those council policies are adopted by resolution, which means that they set standards that a council, at one point in time, decided these are the standards that councils should live by, dealing with the subjects that we'll discuss. And there are 22 of them. We're not going to cover every 22 of them, but we're going to discuss the ones that are most significant. So, during the meeting, communications between council members will be professional and courteous. Council members will treat each other with respect. Differences will be resolved privately and directly and without delay. Now, that's not to say fair and open debate is not allowed. It's reasonable and should be had. But when you get to personal attacks and personal criticism of each other, that's out of line, as is someone from the podium addressing you, as council members, and criticizing you personally. That's out of line. Now, the mayor and the conduct of the meeting has primary responsibility for assuring that doesn't happen. But you've also appointed me, as your city attorney, as your, shall we say, sergeant-at-arms, to assist the mayor in that regard. So, if it's out of hand, and it looks like the mayor needs some assistance in that regard, you'll see me jump in and say, timeout. This is not the way to conduct the meeting. And remembering, the public is observing how you're conducting yourselves, and so it just hurts you, as a council, and hurts the city as a whole if we have that kind of disagreements taking place from the dais during the course of a meeting. They should be, if you have something unpleasant to say to the other council member outside of fair debate, if it's unpleasant and it's a cheap shot, reserve it till after the meeting, and then it probably shouldn't be said at all, because then just one thing leads to another, and it's not a good way to keep business for the city going in a positive manner. Okay. This is kind of continuing on. While individual council members may discuss issues with the city manager and the city attorney, any request that requires more than 30 minutes of staff time must be approved by the entire council. An example of that is, you've got some issue, and you want to have some research done on it. You ask city manager to take care of this, to get you the information, and the city manager advises you, that's going to take a lot of work. It's going to take a good 45 minutes, he estimates. In that setting, you need to come back to the council and get the authorization to have staff time devoted to answering that kind of question. So, 30 minutes of staff time, and obviously, that's an estimate, approximate time, but the city manager's office is responsible for abiding by that. You may not direct work responsibility of any city employee, other than the city manager and city attorney. So, directing a staff person to do something, you need to go through the city manager to give them that direction. What would you expect from the mayor? Meetings will be chaired in a professional and positive manner. Regular communication with the CMs, city managers, city attorney, and boards and commission chairs. Attend events as ceremonial head of the city, and keep the council informed of meetings with potential businesses, developers, and builders. Now, I'm going to add a comment to this, and this doesn't apply just to the mayor, but applies to everybody. If you attend a meeting that you're representing the city on, and an issue comes up at that meeting, and you need to vote on it, you've got two choices. One is, if you have no idea where the council is leaning on that, you should seek to defer the vote, because you, yourself, really aren't in a position to speak for the entire council unless you know the authorization that the council is giving you. They know in advance, that's easy. If you don't know in advance, it might be a little more difficult, but you've got a problem with speaking on behalf of the city council if you don't have the express authority to do that. So, what's your responsibility, then, is to defer from voting on it until you get direction, and then come back with your direction and pass on it. Now, I suppose that there are situations where you aren't able to defer the vote. Well, then you have a judgment call to make, but if you don't have any idea what the city is after on this, or what the city council wants, you're better not to vote on it, because if you vote one way, and then you come back and report to the council, and you're off base on that, then you could have some unhappy council members because of what you did at that meeting. Next. Okay. Staff. Staff will provide you and is responsible for providing you information to ensure your decisions are well-informed. So, if you've got an issue before you, and you're being asked to vote on it, and you don't feel comfortable voting on it, because you don't have all the information, your best option is to defer the vote until staff gets you the information that you need to vote on it. Now, it's intended that city manager will schedule monthly one-on-one meetings with each of you so that he can hear your concerns and try to address them. And I'll ask Brian, are you planning to proceed with that one-on-one meeting, so you can expect to be meeting with city acting -- or interim city manager McBroom on one-to-one basis, hopefully each month or thereabouts? City attorney will serve as parliamentarian. I've already addressed that, so. Council policies. City council discussed this issue, let's say, for an extended period of time. They spent a lot of time on it. What we're talking about here, though, is items that are already included in the budget for travel. I'm not talking about discretionary funds. We're going to talk about that in a moment. This is over and above discretionary funds. So, $7,000 per member, per year, is budgeted for city council members to attend authorized events or conduct city business. Now, expenditures of $350 or less must be approved by the city manager. Expenditures greater than $350 must be approved by the city council as a body. Travel arrangements may be made by city staff or by the council member, but, go ahead, if you are incurring the expenses, they can only be incurred for you, not for family members. And when you incur the bill, you need to submit it for approval within 30 days. And that's a recent change, so it eliminates you coming in six months later with a set of bills for approval. So, you need to pay attention to that, otherwise you may end up incurring costs that you paid out of your pocket and not get reimbursed. Out-of-state travel, whether it's air, rail, or private car, the reimbursement is limited to the cost of the lowest direct airfare available, assuming that it's an air -- it's a flight that's involved. Otherwise, it's limited to what a private car would cost for reimbursement for mileage. In-state travel, mileage reimbursement is at the current rate of the IRS. Lodging, actual reasonable occupancy rate for the council member for the minimum number of nights required to attend the function. Gratuities for maid service is limited to more than $2 per day. As you can see, council went into considerable detail on this travel expense issue. Meals per diem is based on federal guidelines, which includes gratuities, taxi, actual costs, plus the tip not to exceed 15% of the fare. Rental cars, only when the use of such a vehicle provides the most economical means of transportation available to provide the necessary connections. Now, if it doesn't make sense to rent a car for just half a day or something, and you're using a taxi in that situation, this is more addressed to a longer stay, and you feel that you need a rental car to get around, as opposed to taxi fares. Parks and recreation privileges. You and your spouse and dependent children are entitled to receive free membership to the rec center. Non-dependent children receive free membership only if the total member of free memberships for your family will not exceed four. I think that's pretty self-explanatory. Park shelters, you're limited to use of one free park shelter per year. The use cannot be for political purposes. If you're in a campaign, you can't use the park shelter to facilitate or to campaign for your election, and you cannot -- and it cannot be used on a holiday. Golf course. During your term, you receive free membership to Buffalo Run Golf Course. When you play, you can bring three guests for free. Golf courts, golf carts will be provided. Lifetime memberships. If you serve five or more years on council, you receive a lifetime membership to the course and to the rec center, excluding paid programs. Ethics. Standards on confidential information gained in the course of or by reason of your official position, including exec session. Now, on the face of it, that sounds pretty clear-cut, pretty simple. But in actuality, the truth is, in the past, we've had real problems with breach of confidentiality, especially in confidential matters that are discussed in exec sessions. So, this is an item that I really want to harp on, because when you go into an executive session, and there are limited reasons for an exec session, and I'll, every time you make a motion for an exec session, it has to be approved by two-thirds of you, and the reason for the exec session needs to be spelled out in your motion, and I always help with that, because it's, I write it so it's on your agenda document there, so you can just read the motion right off there, so that you're on sound footing when you hold that exec session. But that's the first step. Now, you get into an exec session. The problem is, what you discuss in that exec session needs to stay in that room. And if you divulge what's in the exec session, then you're violating the council policy that says what you discuss in the exec session is to remain confidential. Now, here's a dire consequence if it doesn't. Let's say that you go into exec session, and you discuss something that's confidential, and then you come out later, that meeting or at a subsequent meeting, and you have divulged what's in, what took place in that exec session, and somebody is adversely affected by your action. They've got a good, strong case to throw out any action you take when you have discussed it in the exec session, and now you violated that discussion, and now you're taking action based upon that exec session, when it was supposed to be a confidential communication. So, it's not only violating the trust of your other council members, it's also has some legal consequences. So, don't disclose it unless it's required by law. That would mean if we got a subpoena from the court, then we would, as city attorney's office, would be in a position, then, of deciding, are we going to fight the subpoena? And if we don't fight it, and the subpoena is good, then you're duty-bound to disclose it under a court order. But don't use it to advance the interests, your own interests or interests of your family members. A good analogy or comparison of that is what we call inside trading. You get private information on Wall Street, and you're a broker, and you get information on the inside. You can't use it. It's a criminal law in that case. It's a violation. Well, it's a violation here, too. It just happens to not be a criminal law, but there are other consequences that we don't want to face if you violate. don't want to face if you violate. Standards of conflicts of interest with very limited exceptions. You may not have an interest in any contract with the city. I already talked about that. You may not participate in any manner, on any matter in which you have a prohibited interest, and the common one is you have a financial benefit or a financial interest in the outcome of a vote, you got to abstain from voting and you got to abstain from even participating in the discussion. And of course, you can't personally solicit funds from any person or entity engaged in or expected to engage in property development in the city or business activities with the city unless authorized by official action of the council. A good example there is, somebody's trying to get zoning and they come, and you know that he's trying to get zoning, so you use your position as a city council member to contribute to whatever fund you choose, and that is prohibited. Now, we all know that developers will contribute to campaigns. That's not what I'm talking about. It's when you earmark or tie a contribution to action that you're expected to take, a specific action. Just because you're a council member doesn't mean that you're prohibited from receiving contributions for a campaign. You do it all the time. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about you have a specific issue in front of you and you're soliciting funds from that developer or person who's asking for some consideration with the council. All right, now, if you have a personal conflict of interest, what you need to do is you disclose it to the council, but then you have to abstain from voting. So you do disclose it and you don't try to influence the decision of other council members. You don't participate in the discussion. I think that's just common sense. Now, when a man, when a council member determines, when the council determines a member is excused from voting, then you are excused from voting. But if you don't ask for an abstention from voting and council doesn't grant it, then under the charter, and you don't want to vote, but then you're, you're counted as a yes vote on that issue. You're counted as a yes vote if you don't vote and don't get approval for the abstention. Standards on gratuities. You may not accept gratuities, favors, or gifts given in connection with any contract or business of the city. You may not accept a gift which is intended to influence an upcoming decision or which is intended to reward you for an official action you have taken. This gets touchy because sometimes, and I hark back to our city council, long before all of you, I think, even Sean and Renee, there was a developer who wanted to give Christmas hams to each of the council members for Christmas. On the face of it, that didn't seem to be too much out of order, but I was very unpopular because I said you can't accept that gift because that developer happened to have a case pending, a zoning case that was pending, and he was given out the gift, even though it was a minor thing, $10 or whatever a ham would cost, Christmas ham. But a laughable event that took place in Commerce City was the city council's acceptance and then denial of the Christmas hams. So that's an example, a small, simple example of what you sometimes run into. Now, it does get more tricky when we have a situation where you're invited, as a council member, to a basketball game of the Nuggets. Cronkite owns the Nuggets, so Cronkite invites you to attend the basketball game as his guest and in his, in his room. My advice is, because we have a continuing business relationship with Mr. Cronkite, it's risky, at, at the least, to accept the invitation. I know it's tempting, you'd like to, but preferably not. Now, somebody else who doesn't have a continuing business going on with the city, then I don't see a real problem unless it's foreseeable that there's going to be business conducted with the city by that person and it's obvious he's trying to influence you and reward you in some way regarding an upcoming decision. But that's a judgment call. I'm always available, and I get asked quite often, when it's on the fence, should I or should I not? Always feel free to call me and we talk about it. But that can be a problem, especially if somebody else's property interest is involved and you now are associating with somebody on the opposite side of that issue and you accept the gift from them, how does that look to the other party? It's what the perception is in some cases. Anyway, try to avoid that situation. Go ahead. All right, the media, you will not give, you should not give, will not give off-the-cuff responses because that's the quickest and easiest way to get into trouble. Because sure enough, the media's going to quote you on what they want to print or convey as part of their story. The feel-good type information is usually not the type of information they're trying to convey. What they're looking to you for is something that is going to be controversial or detrimental to the other members of the council. Say, well, I sure didn't have anything to do with that decision. I didn't vote that way. That's the kind of thing that just leads to dissension among you, and it's best not to even go down that road. Don't go off the record because I learned a long time ago, you're talking to somebody who says, well, off the record, Bob, what do you think? Soon as I give them an answer, suddenly it's reprinted or conveyed and I'm on the record. And I'm supposed to be off the record? There's no off-the-record conversations that go on with the media. So remember that rule. No off-the-record comments, no off-the-cuff responses. Contact the city manager's office if you're contacted by the media and want, want some participation because that's why we have a, an information and communication division. And Michelle is very good at assisting in that, in that type of scenario. This, of course, doesn't apply to campaign issues when you're running for election and they ask you for a quote on something. But if it's dealing with a city matter, always make it clear that you're talking as an individual and you're not speaking on behalf of the city unless the city council has authorized you to speak on behalf of the city council. So if you're writing an editorial article on an issue, be sure you sign it as Sean Ford, individual citizen, or citizen of city of Commerce City. Soon as you start holding yourself out as a member of the city council, it's perceived as you're speaking on behalf of the city council. Go ahead. Discretionary funds, I briefly mentioned those, but for those of you who may not be familiar with discretionary funds, the issue came up with city council, prior city council, when there is a need for the city council member to participate and expend city monies for an activity, but it's not in the budget because it's not one of those travel budget items that we talked about earlier. The city council has previously authorized, and it's in this year's budget coming up for 2012, $1,500 per calendar year for each city council member to tend to council business on activities that are, do not involve this type of travel that's already budgeted. So if it's budgeted, we're not talking about that. We're talking about on non-budgeted items that you, as a council member, feel will benefit the city if you attend. Good examples are, well, first, a good example that is not is attendance at CML or NLC. That's where the city council has authorized those attendance and they're budgeted. Situations where you want to go to a, a meeting of some sort that's out of the city and you feel that it'll be in the best interest of the city because it has to be in the best interest of the city. You can't go just because you think it'll be a good, good time. You have to find first it's in the best interest of the city because you are spending taxpayers' money to do this. So we start with that, best interest of the city, interest of the city. And I get numerous questions, well, what's in the best interest of the city? Well, if you have a doubt, feel free to call me and we can discuss it and I can learn more about it. You can tell me what's going on and then, and then I can give you some advice. Now, if you already are comfortable that this is in the best interest of the city, you don't have to ask anybody, you can do it and go if it's $100 or less, or, excuse me, less than $100. Now, but you do have to submit the proof of the expenditures and the costs, and you have to do that within, we, we said, within 30 days. I may stand corrected on that, I think it's 30 days. And if you don't, and you spent your own money advanced on it, then it could be denied by the city manager's office. Now, if it's between $100 and $350, then you need to talk to my office and get approval as being in the best interest of the city. Then you're, then you're free, free to go, you're, you're covered. Over $350, though, $350 requires approval of the entire city council. So if you know that you're going to be doing this, you need to come before city council as part of your administrative business and get approval for that expenditure. And of course, it can't be used for partisan political events or any other purpose that would violate the Fair Campaign Practices Act, and that has to do with your election campaign and so forth. You can't use the funding for that kind of purpose. This is in the best interest of the city, not in your personal best interest. Okay, citizen communications. This gets to be difficult because you, as a council, you want to convey the idea that if a citizen comes up here before you at the podium and expresses a concern, you want to let him know, you want to try and solve the problem. Well, under our present policy, citizens are permitted to speak either in a citizen's communication or with regard to any item on the agenda except a study session item. Now, if the item's on the agenda and they come up for citizen communication, then the mayor or me need to remind the person that that's on the agenda, to wait until the agenda item comes up, and then, then do your, your talk and your presentation. Now, if it's a study session item, then they wait until the item comes up as an action item and they, they're not allowed to speak on that item if it's a study session item. Citizens under citizen communication are limited to three minutes, but council or the mayor acting as the mayor, as the chair of the meeting may extend the time for speaking to five minutes. We can be a little lax on that, and I know that your attitude seems to be to allow that a little more than, than previously in the interest of public relations, but that's strictly your call. The way the policy's written, it's three minutes extended to five minutes. But one word of caution in this regard, and I'm not speaking for or against any policy here, but I have sat in council meetings where we had citizen communications and we had people in the audience that were waiting to conduct business and we didn't get started on the agenda until nine o'clock. The meeting started at 6:30 and we spent all that time on citizen communications. So if we're going to go down the road of encouraging citizen communications, you need to take another look at how we're doing this. You might want to put, like City Aurora does, citizen communications for a certain period. If it gets longer than that, they move it to the end of the agenda and complete it. So if a citizen wants to stay to the end of the agenda until the business is conducted, then they can do that. But you, you have a responsibility to get your business conducted in addition to hearing citizen communication. So it's a matter of weighing how you want to go on this. But right now, it's three minutes or extended to five minutes. And of course, this goes without saying, and this doesn't happen very often, although it has happened, personal attacks by the speakers, profanity, racial slurs, that kind of thing, not to be condoned. I've observed a citizen at the podium getting out of hand and the police, the chief, having to escort that person out of the council chambers. It got that bad. But that was one incident in, I think, as long as the chief has been here, that I, that I recall that happening. But so, it could happen, but that's the rule. Will not be tolerated. The mayor may order any person to terminate his or her remarks. So if it's going on and on and on, being redundant, and a person's saying the same thing as his, someone just ahead of him said, then the mayor has full authority to use his judgment to terminate the remarks and say, we've already heard that, say it in a nice way, but keeping the meeting moving because you do have a responsibility to conduct the business that's on the agenda in addition to citizen communication. Now, here's another difficult one sometimes. A citizen comes up, you as a city council, you want to try and respond and get the question answered for him, but on the other hand, sometimes it's a, a dead-end street because you're, you're given an answer that hasn't been fully researched by staff, so you have to be careful. If you, if you choose to respond, and according to this policy, you, you shouldn't be, you should just refer it to the city manager for a report back to you and then tell the person you can expect an answer by next meeting or, or something like that. But that's what the policy says. So the general rule is you refer it to the city manager to research it and come back to you with a report and give you an answer. And attempting to reach a solution during the meeting can lead to some problems because you may reach the wrong solution without adequate information with an off-the-cuff-type decision. But that's strictly your call. You decide it, but that's what the policy says. And city, city councils shall refer questions raised to the city manager or the city attorney, whichever is appropriate. If it's a legal issue, me. If, if it's a policy issue, the city manager, to come back with a report to you and tell the citizen you can expect an answer within whatever period of time you deem appropriate. Next. Is that the end? I guess I've covered it. I mean, what I have. There are 22 policy, but I've covered the ones that I thought were most significant for you to hear from me on. The rest are all available in your book. Now, Laura, do you?
Do you want to entertain any questions of what you?
Okay, yeah. All right, this would be appropriate. Shall we do that now? It's 25 to 11. So I'll entertain questions as you want.
Okay. Council has some questions?
Do you see, do you see my light on over there?
Nope, your light is not, oh, yep, here you go, Jim, you're on now. Go ahead. Mr. Benson?
You know, Bob, with regard to council policy, too, I thought that maybe a month or so ago, we raised the 30 minutes to an hour. I specifically recall raising that issue and everybody voted to change that to an hour.
I know you discussed it, I'll stand corrected, but our policy, as I have it written, I did not go back and change it. Now, remember, if we're changing those policies, it needs to be done by resolution. You can't just discuss it and do it by a motion, you have to do it by resolution. You can't change something that's been adopted by ordinance unless you change it by ordinance. Something adopted by resolution, you can only change by resolution or ordinance. Something adopted by motion can be changed, motion, resolution, or ordinance. These policies were adopted by resolution.
I would ask the council, didn't we agree on that before?
Yeah, that, that did happen.
Just, just to clarify, that was what our discussion was over here because they said 60 minutes, too, and... two, and there seems to be a conflict in the policy. One place it says half an hour and another place it says sixty minutes. So, it looks like it got picked up in one area and not the other, and I'm the one that put these slides together, and so I happened to see the one that said thirty minutes.
I'm glad you're here tonight. Okay, let me ask you this question. Did we pass a resolution to make that amendment, though, or was this just something we discussed?
Well, it was actually in the policies as sixty minutes.
Was it?
I'm assuming someplace in the policy that we probably did.
It's sixty minutes then.
It is sixty minutes.
Okay. Everybody seems to agree to that, except I didn't think of that. So, sixty minutes.
Jim, you have anything else?
Yeah. With regard to, you know, participating in the meetings of boards, and, of course, I've been to a lot of these, and things are going to come up that you haven't specifically discussed with the staff. I mean, I always get a report on what's coming up before Dr. Cog from Darren Sterling or perhaps Chris Kramer or somebody about things that they think are of interest to the city. And there have been times when I have not gone along with that because as things came up during that vote, I had to make a decision. I'm not going to get Dr. Cog to say, "Well, please wait until next month to bring this issue up."
I understand. That's why I waffled a little bit on that part of it.
And I think you've got to, you know, when you appoint somebody to a board, you've got to trust their judgment, to listen to what's going on, and look at what the staff is recommending.
And I don't disagree with that. Let me make this point. If you know what the council's position is on something, you're duty-bound to follow that position. Now, what you're talking about is where you don't know the council's position, but in general, you should have some idea of how, in the best interest of the city, they're leaning, and if you can't defer the vote, you have to vote. You have to do something. So, good judgment says, exercise your best judgment because you have been appointed by the council to attend those meetings, so they place some trust in you to attend the meeting and vote in the best interest of the city.
But I agree with you that if the council does take a specific position on an issue, that's going to be the position that you take at the board meeting.
Right.
If the council takes that position. And also, we had a discussion about the interaction with the citizens during citizen communication, and I know citizen communication was done one way five, six, seven, eight, ten years ago, and as of about the fall of two thousand and seven, it changed where we were not allowed to interact with the person speaking. And I thought that we had decided, at about the same time that we decided to increase the thirty minutes to an hour, that we were going to go back to the former procedure that existed, I guess, prior to two thousand and seven. Didn't we have that discussion also?
Yes, we did. And there's two or three of these policies in here that have mistakes in them.
I appreciate knowing.
But it's, I mean, they're really, it's easy administrative mistakes that can be cleared up. I guess you have to do it by resolution.
Well, it depends on if they're material changes. If you're changing the whole intent of what it states, then you need to have a resolution to amend it. But if it's something that's obviously clerical, like maybe this thirty-minute, sixty-minute thing, that's easily handled administratively just by your telling me. I can do that.
But I know that this citizen communication, it was brought up about six months ago.
And we did change that, that we can now talk back to the citizens. But we are not to engage them. One of the things we did, we said we weren't going to engage...
We weren't going to engage them in debate or anything, and if it's a question of something, it was, basically, the policy stayed the same except that we could question the citizens in citizens' communications now instead of just no action whatsoever, referring everything to staff.
Renee, is that your understanding about the way it was prior to oh-seven?
Yes, that's how it was prior to oh-seven.
Because this was raised six months ago, and it kept getting put off at the instance of the former mayor and...
Which policy is that?
Citizen's Communication.
It's the last one you did, Bob.
Question number?
Twenty.
And, you know, being an elected official for eight years prior, I think it's important that the council have the freedom to ask questions of the residents and try to take care of their issues while they're here. Most of the time, it's not one of those cases where you don't have the information. It's, hey, can, I got this pothole in front of my house, and if everybody up here at the dais sits here and goes, "Talk to staff," it doesn't get you anywhere. You need to be able to say, "Hey, you know what, Brian? Call Greg Clemmerson, get the pothole fixed. I'm going to go by Ms. Johnson's house tomorrow at two, and I hope that there's not a pothole there. Thanks, Brian." Then you move on. There's no reason to drag some of these things out.
Something like that. Right. The council policy specifically says, "We're not engaged in debate with citizens or other council members during citizen communications, but questions may be asked of citizens during citizen communication to aid in clarification and determining a proper course of action." So, the expressions of concern are appropriate, and if it's something that could be readily answered, let's go ahead and do it.
Well, you know what, Bob? My feeling is even if it's something that can't be readily answered, as long as you can sit here and have communication with that resident and that they feel that you are serving them in capacity, that they put you on this dais to serve them, then I think you need to have that discussion as a council member. And I would refer to all the other council members. If a lady from her union came in here concerned about fracking, and she expects Mr. McElhoun to hold a conversation with her, I expect him to have that conversation with her regardless of how intense it may get. And it's up to me to watch those times. Like tonight, we had four people on the agenda to speak during council communications. I used a little bit of laxity and allowed them to state what they had come for. If we had twenty on here, I would be more strict about the three-minute rule. But I want to get back to where the citizens are first in this council chambers.
Well, I think the council policy's written broadly enough to allow you that leeway. I mean, it doesn't say that you can't do that, and, of course, we can always amend it if it did go that far.
But you know what? So far in these last two council meetings, I've been really happy with the engagement that I've seen from the council with the residents that come in. I don't expect all of you to have a comment, but if you do have a comment, you want to engage with that resident.
Right.
That's what they elected you for. I expect you to communicate.
And if you have a question, this goes on to say, if you have questions that can't be answered by the person, citizen, or can't be readily answered by staff because they may not be here...
Then you can carry it on. Yeah, we'll get with you later. Staff is going to be in contact with you. That's understandable, but I think it's just common sense approach to talking with our residents. And I think the residents, from what I've heard over the last four years, the residents want to be talked to when they come in here.
And I don't think you need to amend your policy to cover that because I think it's broad enough to allow that.
Good. I do have one comment I wanted to bring up. When you brought up the quasi-judicial situation in the past, I know when a business person has an issue with a signage out in front of their place or parking situations, some of those kind of things, I was not a council member at the time. I got a lot of calls. Had one guy contact me. I contacted three different council members, and they said, "You know, we're not supposed to get involved there. We're not supposed to go talk to the business owners or what have you because it could be quasi-judicial situation." I think it's important that this council realizes that if a business owner calls you, it's pretty easy to figure out if they've got something coming up on the agenda that you need to be careful about. You can't take testimony outside of that hearing. But if a business owner calls you and says, "Hey, I got a little problem down here," like Mr. Benson that came in today, he contacted me. I went over to his restaurant. I looked at his sign violations. I talked to him and tried to ease the situation of what we had tonight. And I think it's important that you realize you have to make it a point to meet with your constituents and step up to the plate. Don't let the quasi-judicial thing scare you because that's what you're going to deal with in public hearings. But you still have a legislative approach that you have to take, and you're still a representative of those businesses and the residents of this community.
Yeah. The worst that can happen is you just abstain from voting when it comes up.
Exactly. But don't make yourself scarce to the businesses or the residents because you are concerned about the quasi-judicial. And you laid it out real good, Bob, but I did see in the past where it was, you shouldn't go do that, you shouldn't go do this. Hey, if Ray Benson calls Rick Teeter tomorrow and says he has a problem with, you know, the city issue on a grease trap, I expect Rick to go over there and talk to him about the problem, and then use common sense to contact the right staff members to say, "Hey, you know what? Ray has a problem. How are we going to deal with it?" But don't step away from your duties. Step up to them, and that's one of the downfalls that I've seen in the past few years, and I'm not holding anybody accountable there. I just am saying, for the eight years that I served on this council, you were expected to go out and do your duty, and in the past four, it seems like it's been hands-off, let the staff have that approach. And I want to be more of a hands-on council, and I expect our council members to go out and be hands-on.
If it's a signage issue, now, that would be board of adjustment. Who's on the board of adjustment? Renee?
Right.
So, Renee needs to be more careful, but other council members are okay.
Sure.
If it's a zoning case, then you...
We all have to be careful because it's a public hearing.
We all have to be careful. And if you go and meet with the person, then you probably, and if you're looking at plans for zoning and so forth, then just recognize that, hey, when it comes up for the hearing, you just abstain from voting and so on.
But if it's your average call that we get, it's a pothole, it's a car parked in front of my house, it's these kind of things, you know what? Go over and meet with the resident, the business owner, and show them that you're there to do your job because in the past, it's been frustrating.
And, Mayor, that's not quasi-judicial anyway, that kind of thing.
I know. That's what I'm saying.
It's the zoning cases that are...
But when you lay it out, I know you have to be really specific about, don't cross this line. But I don't want the new council members to think that, oh, you know, maybe I shouldn't go talk to that guy because we might have a hearing on that. Go out and talk to the people, and if there's a problem and if you have a concern, call Bob. Ask him.
Right.
But don't hold back from doing your duties.
Just a month ago, we had that discussion. There was one area, and I'll just take a moment, if I may, because we didn't talk about it, but that is, and I promised you I would, and that is the open meetings law. I didn't mention that. Were you going to bring that up, Laura? Okay. Okay. The open meetings law says that if more than two council members meet to discuss city business or are together where city business is discussed, then that's considered a meeting, and that needs to be posted by the city clerk's office, as funny as that may sound. But you run the risk, if you meet and there are more than three of you there, or more than two of you there, three or more, then if city business is discussed at that meeting and you're a part of that discussion, even though you might be sitting there, but you're a member of the group that's having the discussion, and that's important. If you're invited to somebody else's meeting, that's not what I'm talking about unless you're a member of the group, like the citizens who have this problem with fracking.
Right.
Now, if you're not a member of the group, I'm not talking about that. If you're a member of the group or if it's a city meeting, it needs to be posted. Now, here's the consequence. If you go and it's not posted, and you then, as a result of that meeting, comes back to the council, such as the fracking, and you pass a resolution in that regard, that resolution may be, if somebody raised the objection, would be eligible to be thrown out of whatever proceeding that resolution is going to be used in. Because if you participate in an illegal meeting, the actions that you take as a result of that meeting are invalid and will be thrown out by a court if somebody objects. And the way the objection would even come, as an example, at an oil and gas commission hearing, we introduce our resolution, and oil and gas company knows that you held an illegal meeting. They can object to the admission of that resolution. And what's worse, if the resolution is admitted, then because the oil and gas company may be innocent of what happened, now the hearing is tainted, and some court could say, "Hey, that's a tainted hearing. We're going to throw out the city's position." So, you're really jeopardizing a lot of things for the city when you attend an illegal meeting. Karen, do you want to add to that? Karen's kind of the expert on open meetings in the office.
I guess the only thing that I would add to that is there is a section in your materials on communications in particular, and I think that where it gets really tricky is when you're talking about social media and those kinds of things and blogs and being careful because you can have a gathering under the open meetings law that isn't an in-person discussion, right? It can happen over the telephone. It could happen because y'all post on the same blog, on the same public kind of interest topic kind of thing, and so you can get into trouble that way. So, just be careful about that. Try to be cognizant of those kinds of things. That'd be the only other item that I'd probably...
Let me ask you, though, Bob, on this fracking deal, since this is not a city meeting, it wasn't called for by the city, and you have a situation in your community where some residents are upset and they say, "Hey, you know, you're our council member. We expect you to be there." And they contact three different council members, and y'all show up. You're not doing city business. You're getting information to bring back to the council. How does that imply?
Well, the question is, why are you there?
Because you were asked to be there by a citizen to get, to have them give you information about a situation.
So that you can come back to the city council and take action.
Absolutely.
That's bad. It could be thrown out as...
As an illegal meeting, even if it wasn't a meeting called for by the city.
The only reason it's an illegal meeting is because you, as a city council, are involved with the discussion that's taking place. You're involved. Now, if the county decides to have some meeting over property that's not even in the area of Commerce City, and we, as a city council, have no interest in it, by all means, no problem going, and you're not standing up and speaking and saying anything, that's not an issue. It's only because you're part of that discussion. Even though you may not say anything, you're there to gather information on behalf of the city.
Gotcha.
And that's where it gets tricky.
And I just want the council members to know that you can go to dinner, you can go golfing with each other as long as you're doing it...
As a social matter.
As a social type of thing. So, I don't want you to get upset if I'm golfing with McElhoun and Teeter over here.
Well, what you did tonight, I thought, was very good answer to this problem when you appointed Councilman McElhoun and Councilman Douglas to appear at these meetings where city, should we say, city business is discussed.
Well, I think the important part of it is, they can say, "We're the liaisons because of the Open Meetings Act," and they can confer that to the residents so that...
Exactly.
And the whole point of me saying that is so that the residents go, "Well, how come you and Steve are the only ones that show up?"
Yeah.
Not because they're the only ones that want to. It's because the rest of us are prohibited, and it makes it an easier channel for the information.
Exactly right. That concludes my presentation.
Thanks. Thank you.
You want to go forward or...
Well, I don't know. How does the council feel about it? You want to move forward to the next section? Everybody ready? Actions and motions?
How long is it?
We've still got an executive session and some other parts of the agenda.
Yeah, I know. That's why I'm asking. Brian, what do you have as first suggestion?
We had originally, at the start of the discussion, this was where we had planned to cut off the orientation. We can come back with other topics, revisit any of these topics at any time in the future.
Okay. Okay.
The executive session, I would think, is 15 minutes.
Okay. Well then, if everybody's okay with it, since this is where staff wanted to stop at for this evening, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session and ask Bob to lead us into that.
The, the motion is to, for this city council to conduct an executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402, print 4, print E, for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations concerning economic development opportunity in Commerce City.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We will adjourn to an executive session and we'll try to make it brief if any of the residents want to stay. Looks like about 15 minutes.
We're going to go ahead and conclude the meeting so that everybody can get out of here in a timely fashion, even though it's after 11:00. Next item on the agenda is reports. City Attorney?
I'm Ed Purlo, Mr. Mayor.
City Manager?
Just very briefly, I'd like Brittany Morris to give you some information about an event that's occurring here in Council Chambers tomorrow evening.
Okay.
Hello again, Brittany Morris Saunders, Director of Economic Development. Tomorrow night, starting at 6:00 PM in Council Chambers, we are going to have an expert panel of developers, real estate professionals, a couple of different cities to talk about urban renewal and its impact in their experience, and then also talking about the Mile High Greyhound Park and some advice that these experts will give us. Very much looking forward to it. The panel will be moderated by Mark Goldberg of Goldberg Properties. And so if you can join us, it is free and open to the public, and we should, we're expecting about 100 people to show up in this room. So, 6:00 PM tomorrow night, in here.
Right here?
Right here.
Okay.
And light refreshments will be served, so maybe we'll get another 100 people.
Well, and hopefully some of the council can make it. I unfortunately will not be able to be there, I have other obligations, but I am going tomorrow morning on the tour.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay. That's all you have? All right, we'll start down here with Mr. Benson.
Thank you. Well, I guess this is more under the heading of administrative council business, but you know, the cones on 104th seem to be moving around, and they're getting worse. I'm just wondering, what can we do to get these people, get these people to finish their job? I mean, it's been, how long has it been? 90 days now? Three months? And they keep moving them around, and you're kind of pushed into a narrow, single lane, a lot of places with a curve. I mean, I've hit a couple of them. Fortunately, they're just made out of soft rubber.
Just because you can't drive at night.
I can't, I mean, at night, they do provide kind of guideposts, you know, to kind of keep the car between them, but do we have any idea when this is going to be over?
We can do a couple of things. One, get you a better estimate when we think it'll be done. We don't know for sure, because it's at the discretion of the contractors that are doing the warranty work, but we'll try and get a better estimate of when we think it'll be done.
Okay.
We can also look at options for speeding it up. The challenge is, because it's warranty work, it's being done at no cost to the city, which is good, except that because the contractors aren't making any money, it's their lowest priority work. They have to complete it within the time provided for in our contract documents.
Well, you know, there's always a reasonable time in any contract, and if these people are dragging their feet, then I'm thinking we may have the right to go in and hire somebody to finish their job and then charge them for it.
We could certainly look and explore what our options are.
That known, that that might be our plan if they don't get the job done, because they're far beyond any reasonable time that they should have had to repair this, I think. Well, anyway, also, last Wednesday, of course, we had this great event over at Kearney Middle School. I guess it was sponsored by Adams 14 and several area churches. I think there were five of us there. Ms. Elliott, Mr. Douglas, Mr. Teeter, Mr. Moreno, myself, we probably served, what, I heard the figure, 300,000 meals that night.
No.
No, is that, no. We served, we probably served about 1,200 meals in a two-hour, two or three-hour period, and it was, the food was great, I thought, and I'm easy to please, though. And it was just a great event. A lot of people got a free meal, and I hope they enjoyed it. I enjoyed it. And that's about all I've got, so thank you.
Rick? Councilman Teeter?
I attended the open house for Adams 14 Board of Education celebration honoring Bill Klocker and Jeanette Lewis, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Moreno?
I noticed how Councilman Benson conveniently left out any report of Texas A&amp;M, but understandable.
Yeah.
In all seriousness, we have, you know, I want to thank Christie Douglas and Councilman Douglas for inviting us to that wonderful event, and being able to volunteer and serve meals to those families was absolutely fantastic. And in that vein, I received an email from a woman with Habitat for Humanity, and she's interested in doing a city council build day, where city council volunteers and builds one of the houses for a day. So, I, if council's agreeable to it, I had so much fun volunteering with you last time that I'd like to do it again, and if you don't mind, I'd like to schedule that with her and keep you updated on it. So, I see a lot of nods, so I'm just going to go ahead and go with it. And that's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Douglas?
Thank you. Hope we've already had a great Thanksgiving. I also participated in the, in the community as far as serving with Crossroad Community Church and Adams 14 School District. And I want to thank, as far as the outreach, I want to give recognition to Maria Murego, who was Adam City High School graduate and a leader of our outreach and ministry at Crossroads. And it was an incredible event. And then also, I'd like to encourage the city to give as many tables to the CC BPA Gala event. Right now, currently, economic development is the only one that has a table, and if we get another table, I think as far as the council president there would be great. My condolences goes out to the family, the man who lost his life in the accident at the Lville Business on Quebec. Losing a loved one, especially at this time of the year, is devastating, and I just want to tell the family, I want that our thoughts and prayers go out to them in this tragic loss. And also attended the Adams 14 School Board, new board members swearing in presentation. I'd like to congratulate Larry Quintana, Mary Morton, and David Rola for their efforts in winning, and special thanks to the other candidates for remaining. Congratulations to Robert Vassal for his election as board president, and Larry Quintana as vice president. And I really had a good time at that event, and looking to be in a very productive and successful time. And also would like to inquire if we could have coffee and cookies here for the folks who come out and tend this, because we don't know how long they're going to be here, especially like tonight, here it is, what, 11:30? So, if we could arrange that, I mean, if that's a council approval, to have coffee, water, and cookies here would be great. Also had Joy Bishop call me, and she was asking about the events, and there was really noise over there around midnight, I guess, this past weekend, and if we could bring forth Noah's, Orton's, entertain that as far as noise capacity over there. She was brought before, but she was just inquiring about that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Elliott?
Thank you, Mayor. As has been said before, I did attend the Thanksgiving outreach that was held at Kearney Middle School, and thank you to the Douglas family for inviting me. Spent a few hours there. I was bussing tables, I was chatting with everyone, it was really nice, a humbling experience, I might add. But it was kind of cool to go back into my middle school, realizing how much bigger I am than when I attended school there, it just seemed so small. But, anyway, so thank you for that. And really, that's it. I am planning to go to the gala on Friday night, so, okay, I'll be there. Other than that, thank you so much, and thank you to the residents that stay here so late with us. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman McAlany?
Thank you. I guess we're kind of mixing administrative business and reports, so let me quickly hit the administrative business items. We talked about the designation of the two council members earlier in the fracking discussion, but another item related to that, if we could consolidate, you know, in a formal document the items that either the city attorney's office or the city manager's office are chasing down relative to that subject, so that we have a formal list of things that the city is pursuing. I know there have been questions raised about who's doing what, and to have that formal list, that way we can be certain of what we're relaying back to the citizens, and we're all on the same page in that regard. So, if council is supportive of that, I would ask that staff put that together. The second piece is related to our brief discussion last week on boards and commissions, assignments for council, specifically the council retreat planning committee. That's typically, at least for the last couple of years, been an event that we've tried to move into the January, late January, early February timeframe to really get a head start on and allow for early, or time early in the year for staff to come back and meet behind that. We're nearing December here in a couple of days, and so would like to get council thinking about locking in a date for either late January or early February, and then lining up the necessary inputs. The last time that we did this, we did a very informal citizen survey, if you will, to help inform and frame some of our discussion about hot button items for the citizenry, and would just like to get staff, or get council, rather, thinking about things that we would want to have in line before we sit down for that, and just want to put that out there so that we're not hurrying at the last minute to try and get that put together.
Okay. And to that, Jason, I would say that I would recommend any council members that have some information, they want the staff to have prepared to move forward on that retreat, that they get with Brian and just let him know what they'd like to have. I know one of the issues is the travel policy and the reimbursement policy and stuff, and I've talked to Brian about that. It's not something, I know it's an issue for some of the folks here on the council, but it's not an issue I want to jump at without having background information. So, I've already requested that two years of the past, past two years for all council expenses and travel business for the mayor and the council members be given to this council, so that we have some background on what the job entails, and also to have them do some surveying of cities our size in the metropolitan area, so that we can have some background of what's being done, so that we're in line with the rest of the metro area, and in line with what the past councils have had to use for expenditures.
What I was also going to suggest relative to the retreat is to put together at least a high-level picture of what we've used for structure for the last couple of years to help give a sense of what that looked like. See if I can get that together in advance of the.
Well, another thing that I also asked for, and I know he's putting together, is an organizational chart showing the salaries of all the different departments, so that we have an idea where we're at, we're at structurally, so that the council can take a look at that. So, any of the council members that have any proactive ideas to give to Brian, so he can start structuring that retreat, I think will be helpful, so that you all get your answers that you have to any questions that you may want to have answered. Is there anything else, Mr. McAlany?
Oh, that's it?
Okay.
Oh, actually, I'm sorry, on the report front, had the privilege of spending some time doing some holiday shopping this afternoon with Councilman Moreno and members of the Commerce City Victims Assistance 501(c)(3), including Commander Woog and the members of the Victims Assistance Unit in the PD. Essentially, the board shopped for kids that are part of the Project Present effort over at the rec center, and great to see the group out at Walmart this afternoon, filling up some shopping carts for those kids. It's a, it's a great program, and it was neat to see the (c)(3), or the 51(c)(3) be able to help participate in that in some small way, so that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Bullock?
I had a great Thanksgiving, and I have no report.
Okay. I spent the week trying to recover from being sick. I spent the week trying to recover from being sick. First, I would like to, number one, I want to congratulate Dominic Moreno on his board appointment with National League of Cities. I think he will do a great job, and I'm glad that you are taking some extra steps with the organization, National League of Cities, because I think anything that you do there sheds a positive light on this community. So, congratulations. I met with Mr. Bill Clays over some ERU discussions that he's had with Tom, and I just brought back that information and gave it to Tom, and he's, him and Brian are working on that, so no real report, just one of the meetings that I did attend, I did cancel a couple of meetings because I was under the weather, starting to feel a little better, but not quite there. But the biggie for the evening for me is Lynda Watts and her complaint that was driven by the event center, I guess Friday night, of course, the event center leases out space, and there was DJ music, and it kept her up at night with her windows closed. I did talk to Brian. This has been an issue since before, when I was on council, when it was Club Malibu, and we don't want to go back to that. So, one of my suggestions is that the staff contact the owners of the event center and give contact information to our staff and to the citizens that live in close proximity, so that if they have a complaint, they can call them and ask them to please turn the music down. If they're reluctant to do that, I would like our police department to look at those complaints from a disturbing the peace perspective, and properly cite them if they are in fact disturbing the peace, and I want to make sure that the police department has the flexibility to make that call. I don't want to say they're disturbing the peace, I want the officer to go out, if it's loud and he can hear it from Mrs. Watts' house, and he determines it's disturbing the peace, then I want him cited. And I think that in your contact with the owners of the event center, they let them know this is the path we're going down, and that it's just not going to be tolerated on a long-term basis, we're going to nip it in the bud before it becomes a huge disturbance problem like we had before. Mrs. Watts also brought me this playing by the rules. She said that all music from DJs has to be licensed. I'm going to leave this information with the staff so that they can look into this and see if they actually do have to be licensed by some authority, as well as any DJ, she had a concern that any DJ that comes into the city to perform a business, I want the staff to look at the fact, do they need to be licensed with the city, and make sure that they're licensed with the state, so that they're in compliance with the state codes and with the city codes, or business licensing codes, to actually come here and provide that service. But I know this council's dealt with these noise issues in the past, and I think that we really need to let the police department have the reins to make some decisions here on whether it's disturbing the peace and act accordingly. Could we also use a nuisance? I want the police department to use any way they can to make sure that the peace is not being disturbed to any of the residents, and they know what those timeframes are, and what our noise ordinances are, and that type of thing, but if you go over there and you're standing in front of Mrs. Watts' house and you can't hear the music, I don't expect you to go cite them. But if you can hear the music and it would be disturbing, that's a, that's a call the police department needs to make, and I'll leave it in staff's hands to contact the owners of the establishment, and let them know that, you know, at midnight or 11 o'clock at night, there's some seniors in the neighborhood that could be sleeping, and if you can hear it through those walls and into a house half a block away, then your ears are probably bleeding inside the establishment. And trust me, when Club Malibu was there, your ears were bleeding in the establishment. So, I just want to try to take care of Mrs. Watts' complaint tonight, and direct staff to look into it, and have the police department use their best judgment on being able to cite the individuals and notify them they're going to be cited. So, the drink thing, I wanted to touch on that. Steve, I'm glad you brought that up. One of the things is, there's no food and drink allowed in here, but we're all partaking in drink, and I think it's only fair to, that any of the residents that come in here should have the opportunity to have a drink or a candy bar until it gets out of hand, and I think you'll see that our residents are respectful, and they'll take care of this new building. But in fact, they did pay for it, and if we can have a drink in here after so many hours of a meeting, I think it's important that they have the opportunity as well, and that's just my own personal opinion. If I had it my way, would open that coffee shop on Monday nights for the residents to partake, if they wanted a roll or a coffee or whatever. They paid for this building, and I think that that service, if there's one night a week that it could be open, I would appreciate it to be open on Monday nights. Mr. McAdonally?
Well, I was going to suggest the same, and I failed to mention it, that's obviously a vendor that has the license to operate that, I mean, have we considered approaching them to see about staying open on Monday nights?
To my knowledge, we have not, but we'd be happy to do that.
Well, and from my understanding, we subsidize that because it's here within the city hall and may not be able to make ends meet if it otherwise wasn't, and if we are putting any tax dollars towards that vendor, I would push strongly to have it open on Monday nights, so that any of the residents that want to partake could. Mr. Douglas?
Oh, well, I was suggesting that we just have our own brew back here, maybe like for 50 cups, you know, when it's gone, it's gone, but just for the residents who take their time out to come down here, I think that's, that would be our obligation, you know, not have them come down and have to buy coffee, but just provide that for them.
Well, and that's not a bad idea, either to have some coffee or some snacks or water, whatever, I understand where you're going with that, but if our tax dollars are subsidizing that vendor, I think that it should be open on Monday nights regardless, so that if I want a cappuccino, or if one of those residents wants a cappuccino, their tax dollars are what keeps it open, they should have that opportunity. It's open, it's open five days a week for city staff, it should be open one night a week for council, for the residents of this community to come to a meeting. Anyone else?
Oh, just one more thing, too. As far as the structural chart, can I just email you some suggestions as well?
Mayor's request was to provide information on the current structure. Certainly, if you have comments, I expect to be meeting with each of you on a regular basis. I'd be happy to discuss those then.
Yeah, I think that's probably appropriate. If you all haven't got a chance to meet with city manager, I want you to schedule some time so you can meet with him, and feel free to throw anything out there that you feel you need. You don't have to, it doesn't have to run past anybody else. If you have something you want, talk to Brian, and I think it just helps him to structure this planning retreat, so that we have all the information we need to act on the things that we want to act on. If there be no further business coming before the city council this evening, we're adjourned.
Have our own brew back here, maybe like for 50 cups, you know, when it's gone, it's gone, but just for the residents who take their time out to come down here, I think that's...